All right. Whatever you read, Gordy.
Okay. One item on your consent agenda, and that's the change order that we discussed last week to thicken the asphalt. Roosevelt grade road another two inches. In the amount of $630,000 that would be paid for out of the overweight fees that we've collected. Or the landfill trucks hauling up the road. And it's for that purpose.
So Gordy, with the current prices. Oil right now, is that? Are you expecting in five years it'll only be worse, or you know, when we come to do it again? Like if we just let that keep building up, or? Where are we at in terms of historical average of price range for that cost?
Low, we're significantly low. Yeah, we're $70 a ton. And back when I got here, there was a spike in the oil. We paid for Lincoln Street, we paid $200 a ton to pave that road. So we're, that was the high.
What was that? That was that 100 gallon oil though, right?
The way I was expensive, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now it's, it's a low point again for us, so it's a good time to pave.
Okay.
Yeah. We get a lot for our money right now. On the construction side, Old Mountain Road. The contractors finished subgrade and they're putting down the crush surfacing. And so it won't be long now until that is finished. And they're building fences and putting up mailboxes. And. They don't have too many working days left, which is good because they're almost done too, so. Nothing new on our signs and guideposts. Still can't get signing materials, the metal posts and the actual blanks for the signs themselves. I think we're going to try and encourage the contractor to start and put up the guideposts at least. Because they can get those. We're also having the same problem with signs, it's the metal fabrication parts that, that. Were not being able to receive, so West Darland Road, they have to replace all the signs, they can't get materials for the same reason. But they'll install the guideposts and when the signs come in, they'll put those up, but the old signs are there, so.
So the old signs are still.
Yeah, we leave those up until the new ones replace them, so it's, it's not a big deal, it's just a delay. Roosevelt grade road, the contractor finished grinding and they're removing the drainage structures that we replaced with the new ones. And next week on Monday, they'll start paving. So we're. They'll start paving the pre-levels and then they'll get to the wearing course, so they have. 10 days, 10 good days, so. To pave it out, but see how that goes. On the design side, Courtney Road, just getting that project ready for a November ad for construction in 22. Clicked that path, we working on the design part on that project. And working, a lot of it's, the tough part is the coordination with Washdod and Parks, that's out of our control, and so we're working with those folks to. Work through those issues. Courthouse parking lots, about wrapped up with the details on the design, and then we'll sit down with the city and. And go over what we want to do and make sure they don't have any issues with our proposal. Maintenance side. The guys are busy patching, grading, since we got some moisture. We're hydro seeding a couple of projects, Estep Road project where we built that road up with our grindings. And pipeline road where we fixed the drainage issue and the pavement problems. And so they'll hydro seed those, White Salmon. Glenwood shops, we're doing a lot of brushing, so we have some moisture now again, so they're mowing and, and brushing in Lyle. Glenwood and Trout Lake, and then patching and replacing culverts. The new building, so. Where the contractor continues, he's trying to push toward paving on the 26th, so that means he's got a lot of curb to pour. In two different locations to pave that out by the 26th. But they're pushing, they poured all the concrete around the building, so the rest of the. Only sidewalks and curb and gutter are in those parking lot areas. Everything else is done, so all those heated sidewalks that have been wired but exposed for a couple of weeks are now closed up, which is good. And they look good. The flooring, so. Talked about the issues with the flooring, so. This is the product that was installed that we had a problem with, and this is the commercial product that they want to replace it with.
So how does that just stretch so easily?
It wasn't supposed to, the finish is not how it's supposed to be, it's not supposed to scratch off like that. So it's a defective, and that's why they want, they're going to replace it for no cost.
The company?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is another heavier commercial product that they want to replace it with.
Oh yeah, it's much heavier.
Yeah.
I mean, I like the look of it, it looks like you have to polyurethane it or something.
Which we don't want to do. So that color is slightly different, but it's very similar.
Just scrapes off.
Yeah.
Unless, are you supposed to put it down and then buff that top off?
Booties on everybody. Yeah, so that's what I think the product that they want to replace it with is.
Close enough.
Yeah. So the other question is, so we talked about, I can't remember who was there, whether Jake, you were there, or just Dan and Dave. But the first floor, there's some cracking in the concrete after they finished it. You know, I went back over there and looked at it several times, they gave us a raw cost to, you know, what would it be to? Put the tile in the hallway on the first floor and then seniors the front entrance, so it's anywhere from 35,000 to 45,000. My thought is. They'll clean it up, let's see.
Yeah.
If we can live with that, you know, I think it'll mostly disappear. Right now, they have that white dust in the.
Right, so cracks really show up.
Yeah, so they really show, and I think they'll disappear a lot, they'll still be there, but is that a big deal? We can always do something later. If we find that we don't like it, because it's in those spaces where, you know, could be done on a weekend. And not disrupt business, so.
Yeah. I would. I would go with that.
Yeah.
Just let's, let's live with it. Put some crack sealer in there, make it blue, make it look like rivers running through there. Well, the thing is, it almost looks like it's. Like granite, or like it's got the.
Yeah.
You know.
That figure in it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I, I think it's.
We meant it to be like that. Yeah, that's what I was going to go with, it's supposed to be like that, that was, those were engineered, and, and it is. You know, it has nothing to do, it, it, it's not compromised structurally at all, there's nothing, I mean, concrete cracks.
It does.
And you put, you put control joints in to try to get it to crack where you want it to, and it doesn't always do that.
No. Yeah, it'll be, the concrete will be the most durable surface.
Right.
You know, well, and we'll have to get one of those scrubbers probably to maintain it, but that will help keep the dust and grime out of the cracks and.
Right.
Yeah, I think it will look fine.
I'd say let's live with it and see. You know, later if it's like, we're so god, I just can't stand it, then we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
I'm utilitarian, you know. Yeah, yeah, as far as, yeah, it works, it's fine.
Okay, we'll go with what we got. All right, so furniture, they cleaned it up last week, and by Monday morning, it was cleaned up. They're delivering furniture, doing that again today, and hopefully this week they'll be assembling. Furniture, so they, I think they want to start with the cubicles. So that, because they have coordination with the electrician to get that electrical work in the spine of those cubicles, and. Then they'll keep working through it. The one thing I got a notice from the furniture people is we ordered. We ordered the stuff three, sure, it's three months ago. The couple lobby furniture, the couches, chairs and stuff, and. I just got notified that that won't be here till March. So, you know, it'll be almost a year, and, you know, will, will we get it then, I don't know. So they've thrown out a proposal, if we want, you know, and I'm not sure that we need to. To have rental furniture in those lobbies, public spaces. For 2650, I think it is, for the duration until we get the new stuff, so that's an option.
2650.
What's that?
For how much?
2650. The rent furniture that would replace the stuff we were, we are, have purchased and will get eventually.
So $2,650?
Yeah.
For rental for. Four months till, till March.
Maybe longer, I don't know.
And what's, the furniture is just lobby furniture?
Yeah, so there's a couple of public spaces that we have, or the, the main lobby, and then up in buildings of planning it. There outside of those conference rooms, there's furniture that goes there. And so I, I don't know that it's necessary to have it, but.
I will say, just as an observation, the, the furniture in the lobby at the Pioneer Center, I've never seen a human sit in. I'm shocked. Have you? Okay, I stand corrected. Well, waiting for somebody to exit one of those. Okay. Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't know. How much money did we spend with them?
What's that?
How much money did we spend with these guys?
Um, a bit.
$400,000. More than that?
Yeah.
Okay, you can tell them they can throw in the furniture since they didn't deliver on that.
There you go.
If they want to rent, yeah, if they want to rent it, great. I mean, they really should, it's there, that's an unreasonable, they didn't meet their deadline, so why are we being punished necessarily?
All right.
Yeah. And if not, we had chairs, you can use these. No metal, great goodwill.
Goodwill, while we wait.
While we.
Yeah.
At least all the furniture in the building is now till March, that would be a little different.
Yeah.
Everybody standing up till March. Yeah, one chair.
Uh huh. Yeah, we did actually replace one of our chairs, the guest chairs in the office, they were delayed till, they didn't even know when. And so we found a chair that was pretty much the same chair for less money, and we're going with that, and they'll be here in, I think, six weeks, so. Yeah, that, that change worked out good for us. Let's see, they're still working on the interior frames, and the glass people are there this week to install glass in those frames that are, reco frames that are installed. They have more to go, and asset is wiring the, all the door locks. Because a lot of them have those electronic strikes, so those are all getting wired in. Right now, the electrician, some of them are finishing up some of the things that need to be installed, they're testing a lot of the systems. And turning things on, same thing with the mechanical, they're testing systems and equipment. And it won't be long, we'll have the, the main heat running when they fire up the boilers in that place. So.
Have we had many ghosts in those systems yet, or are they firing up pretty good?
So far, so good, yeah, yeah, so far it's working out good, and I'm sure we'll have, you know, issues with some of the equipment, there's a lot of parts, moving parts in there, so. Well, they'll work through those. Let's see, moving, so I'm in the process of setting up a meeting, and. We may have to have a couple of meetings. Looks like most people can make Monday the 11th. But basically, in general, we have a tentative schedule for people. For when, when to move, just looking at, you know, our, our staff to be able to move people, I think we can move two to three offices a week. Starting on the 8th of November. So health, IT, planning and weed. We'll try and do that first week, I think IT, I know that's four, but we're trying to squeeze IT in there a little sooner if we can, the week before. Because they'll be needed on site when we move people and get things working again for equipment and computers. The week of the 15th. You guys are usually out that week. At WAC. So that seemed like a good time to move. And so that's seniors, commissioners and HR. So the other thing was to try and have, you know, once we move people, the building's open. And we wanted to have somebody on each floor, so that's kind of the first day we, or move, or first week we're moving, we want to have each floor occupied by somebody. And then we'll kind of keep doing that as we go and filling in the space. The week of the 22nd, which is Thanksgiving, we'll tackle WSU, try and move them. And then the week of November 29th, after the holiday. Building, and then economic development, natural resources and solid waste. And then the week of December 6th, we'll, we will. So that should, if everything goes right, I think, you know, it's, everybody has to be ready for their week. You know, we're not boxing up stuff for people, so everybody will be required to box and label their own stuff.
I'm planning on shutting my lights off and leaving, so. And everything consists.
Yeah, so everything will just.
Giant shred. Spread it all.
That's one way.
I'm picking nothing.
Yeah, so then people just have to unpack. The copiers, since they all have to be moved by the copy company, will probably bring them here a day during that week, so. And so it's likely people will have to share equipment for that week until their equipment gets moved. But that's kind of how we're do, we're doing it, it's reasonable to get the copy people here once a week to, to make that happen for us, so, since they have to move them all.
Or people will get lots of exercise, you know, printing, you know, having to run over their old.
Yeah, so, once we get through the first week, we'll have hopefully a printer on each floor at least. Schedule, I did update the schedule, so still planning on getting the occupancy permit. The week of November 5th. And, and then moving in November, that hasn't changed. Courthouse entry, so our contractor's working on the handrail, which is the delay for getting the entrances opened up. They're going to have the south entrance done this week, so that's really one that'll buy us an entrance. We will get this one open by the first of next week, the north entrance, but. We're still, unless I get the contractor to put fencing up along the sidewalk and the street. But they're pretty close to, but they have, still have a lot of activities on the street that they're, you know, we just need to separate the activities, the pedestrians from those activities.
I mean, it looks nice, but I see the railing.
Yeah.
Quite intricate, very. I guess appropriate to the historic courthouse, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll, it looks nice, and then the lead contractors working on that, they'll probably continue to. Work on the stucco repair and the painting afterward to clean up, so, but everything should be open. Starting next, or starting next week. Let's see, we open bids on our courthouse roof HVAC units tomorrow, and that's a small worksite. Don't anticipate that we'll get the units anytime sooner than the ones we talked about for Pioneer Center, but we'll see. And then nothing, no significant change or anything new on the radio project. And then I have a couple pictures, pictures of West Darland, so if you've driven up that way, you've seen it, you know, where we striped it, it's paved. And then it's just going to be the signs and mailboxes that follow and guideposts, so. It's, it's good investment, it'll last us for a long time to come. And that's the end of my list.
You think? No, I mean, I really don't, other, oh, I did, I was just kind of curious, the O'Brien Road closure, when does that pick up that?
You, when you executed it, that vacated it.
Okay.
And so we're, we'll be working on the turnarounds.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's actually what's more my question.
Yeah.
Was when that, because, you know, obviously we'll have to put up, I guess, dead end signs on the, because I drove by there today on my way here. Because I was kind of wondering when that, because there is a, you know, there's sort of a handoff that takes place as far as that we will close the road. And put up, you know, get in some, no outlet or whatever the correct language is these days, and. Have a turnaround.
Yeah, it'll, we'll probably get started in the next, probably not this, but the next week with the signings. I don't know when the landowners plan on putting their gates up.
Right.
And we'll coordinate with them to put the turnarounds in.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I'll, I'll give you an update probably next week.
Okay, well, it's not, obviously, it was not, you know, the public. You know. Well, it'll probably be impassable in what, two weeks? Yeah.
Yeah.
It rains, so.
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be done, so. Okay, that's all I had.
Pretty okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. McClure, if you want to start a little early, you can, or we can take a little break and wait for you.
Couple minutes. Give Richard a chance, you know, he's supposed to be right behind me.
I think he's in, he was, I saw him go into HR. It's like, I don't know, I got time to do one more.
All right, see you later.
All right, we'll see you later.
Trying to hear that schedule, because I'm hoping to go back and visit my mom later this month.
Well, we. I was in your office last week, it looks ready to go.
It is, bring a shovel. Got a front loader out there, it'll be good.
You're one of those, it'd be fun, you've seen those programs where they come in and declutter your house. Yet they make you put everything out of the yard, and they're like, okay, you can have three things. To save you.
No, no. I'm allowed four sheets of paper.
Yeah. Four reams of paper. No, we need hoarders, that's their, that's the, you know, the institutional haul is just all in that office, so.
Just a filing cabinet system. Yeah, it's the. Start out with the economic development, and we have the meeting this, EDA meeting this evening. Saturday, I got their new grant contract. I sent it over to the prosecutor yesterday morning, and he's already got back with approved this form on it. And the proposed contract, really appreciate how expeditious me that was handling. It's very much like other years, there's some changes in the scope of work. And some additional monies, but otherwise, how we're handling it's going to be the same as in, you know, the last couple of decades. We're going to be looking at a application from the city of Golden Dale, a quarter million in 2009 funding to support upgrades to their wastewater treatment plant. We may have some folks in from Lyle Community Council, they need to bail at 6:30. So for another firm commitment, so it may be just a few minutes, introduce the topic of Lyle Point, and we'll have them back. And then we'll continue the discussion on the buildable lands inventory. So any, we, we, it'll be plenty of discussion later.
Just a reminder that the agenda was said that it was in person, but it's all.
Did it say?
It says on our thing, and we also, our time is long too, it's the traditional. Did you change it?
Just six.
Just me know.
Okay.
And your blue card is correct.
Okay.
And I did a page online.
Okay.
So I guess the big, most recent event is SDS is sold, with it closing sometime later this year. It's a combined effort of three companies, so I'm not sure how that's going to work out, you know, we kept a little distant from that. Very distant from that during the sale process, so that we didn't interfere with it, but I think now's the time to go visit the new owners and. See if there's any support that's needed in that transition, there may be. Some displacements, there may be need for some training or other things, so we'll, we'll make a call on them, maybe start with WKO if that. They're so close. Oh, there's also a new owner of Lyle. Talked to them. Last week and made some referrals there, so that's looking really promising. Got a few things.
Can you confirm that it, because it, there was, there was rampant speculation about two months ago. That it, as far as who it was, was.
It's a, it's a company out of Portland.
Okay.
Owns some eating establishments.
Yes, okay, so that was, sometimes rumors are correct. Okay.
Yeah, the elephant in the room sort of thing.
Yes. Okay. Well, that's, that's, I think is good news, really, is.
Yeah. So how much, some experience there?
Experiences, so, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I didn't see that they've got specifically a hotel, but they've definitely got business experience, and they've expanded, been around for 40 years, so. Oh, let's see, Richard, you want to go through a few things here, like the airport?
Yes, sure, so the federal EDA grant, I went back and I looked at how long we've been working on this. January 2020, is when we first started to attack this issue, we did the final submission this month, so this is the. There is no more reviews, or they're going to review it, the investment review committee at the federal EDA will review it, but this is their final time. Take a look at it, so the issue that we came across with when speaking with CGCC. And, and speaking with the airport is, we're not sure what the construction costs are going to be, which is going to dictate how much square footage is going to be, which is going to dictate. What the lease amount is going to be per month, so. Speaking with them, that is something that, that the federal EDA can be flexible with, but they are going to be taking a look at this. Some issues that we're going to run into moving forward of it, moving forward with it, is all of those lots from 16 to 22. On the other side of that closed down runway, do need to have NEPA, so that's something that. NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act, so that review, they're, they're very.
Super C. That'd be a second thing, yeah. Right about as he was explaining it, I'm like. Ah, yeah, I got.
The, 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 the EDA is very sensitive to that, so, as well as the FAA, but some promising things in regards to that. I believe they're going to be meeting October 20th, they pushed back from October 6th to October 20th. The CGCC, they're currently in early talks with the 173rd maintenance group with the Air Force at Kingsley Field, very early talks. But is promising they're willing to donate F-15 for the aviation maintenance program. So right now, the CGCC, they're, I mean, they're already, they have no more square footage that, that they can take up in their current location, so they're, they're really looking at. More square footage to, to utilize out there at the airport, so. So that's, I mean, those are good news, so that's what we have for the federal EDA, something. I'm sure you guys are already aware, but Dave and Aaron Rasmussen, previous airport managers who left, I believe it's July, and since then, Jeff Renard, he was the. He was previously with TAC, he was the new airport manager, and I've been working with them over the last couple of months. So that was something that we had, I had accidentally omitted during our September 7th. Board update, so.
Can we go back to the EDA submission? Just refresh my mind on the potential timeframe, even though that I know it's. You know, tell me something.
So the.
So when a decision, and then if they did, when the funding could be available, and if that all happened and the whole deal went together, when would they be looking at?
Eating our money.
Yeah, yeah, there's that, and then. You know, going out to bid and all the bid documents, and then how does that fit with CGCC's needs?
So the CGCC needs, we're, we're still in line with what they need as far as time hacks. They've already started, they've already got open enrollment, they've already got students that are coming into the program. They're looking at full FAA approval by, from my understanding, January, that might be pushed back a quarter, but they've already been allowed to open, for open advertisement and everything. They do have some space at the Dullport Industrial Park. They do have some space at the Dallas Port Industrial Park, um, but, I mean, they've had to turn down equipment because they don't have the square footage, the equipment donations. And so, I mean, it's, a lot of this, before we put the shovel in the dirt, a lot of this is going to be on the, on the planning portion. So it's going to be that with that environmental review, and then, but we can do a pan and knee change on the building, but we have to figure out what that building is going to look like, because it has to match FAA regulations as far as the height of it and everything, so. There's going to be, uh, and then depending on what that's going to look like, we were wanting to just do a straight up live flight building two point oh, but due to construction costs and everything, that's going to really dictate how much square footage we're going to. How much square footage we're going to have, so. I mean, I would like to say twenty twenty-two, probably the middle of twenty twenty-two, is, is hopefully when we start going out and, and start getting bids and stuff, but we'll see.
So does CGCC have a, I mean, this isn't really my affair, but do they have a contingency if this doesn't happen, and they, I mean, they have open enrollment, they have students, but they you know, part of their program is supposed to be housed in a building that.
Yeah.
Not, you know, been constructed, and there, we don't even know if there's dollars for it yet.
So right now, they have a, a two-year lease at the Dallas Port Industrial Park. So.
So that's sort of their interim.
Right.
Space, okay.
They, they are, they are, um, speaking with the airport, very preliminary talks, um, nothing's been decided, but they are looking at potentially utilizing some space at the airport right now. So, but there's, I mean, there's still haggling over what that's going to look like.
Okay. Okay, well, it's mostly good news.
Yeah, as far as the IRC, they gave us, what's promising is they gave us a soft approval if we went with lot sixteen. Uh, but we were, we really wanted lot twenty-two, because we have, there's more economic development opportunities.
Right.
Within those other lots, and due to some different contractual issues, with a couple of those lots, we wanted to try and get as much bang for the bucks for the infrastructure as we could. Um, but it, I mean. It, it looks promising. So hopefully we'll get a final word, um, at the very latest November or December.
Or you bring them another rock.
Yes, I, or, or I'll bring it.
Okay. McKed's sense process is wrapping up?
Yeah, so McKed's process, we do have a meeting this week, um, we're going to be reviewing the strategies that we've outlined during this entire year-long process. Reviewing priorities, identifying potential partners that can assist us, uh, with some of those strategies, as well as beginning to define what success means on each one of these strategies. So that's where we're at in the process currently, it's going to be from eight, our next meeting is eight thirty to ten thirty, I think, Thursday.
That's about it, other than maybe touch on IACC coming up in the childcare.
Yeah, so the, the Clickcat County Childcare, I know the HR department's been really heavily engaged with them. Um, they did have a federal, the Federal Reserve Bank of San Francisco had a webinar on September thirtieth, which outlines different funding opportunities that, that's coming out of the federal level. Um, specifically investment at child, early childcare and learning facilities. Um, and speaking with some different folks from the, from the childcare committee, uh, we're still looking at different funding opportunities that, that we can pursue to help keep this going, so we didn't just end it with, uh, with the hundred thousand dollar grant that we, that we had obtained from Commerce, where we came together with that study, we're trying to move forward with it and keep that ball rolling. Um, for the IACC conference, that's going to be from October nineteenth to the twenty-first this year, it's going to be virtual, and that's going to be all the, it, uh, just to familiarize you guys, if you're not familiar with the IACC, that's where all the different funding agencies at the state level come together and talk about all the new regulations and policies that come out for any sort of infrastructure funding, whether it's CBG or USDA rural grants, broadband, uh, ecology, I mean, really just kind of anything, so.
Federal funders that there.
Yeah, yeah.
Used to be anyway.
Yeah, yeah, and, and federal funders is part of it, they're as well, mainly state, but there are federal funders.
And if we had a, if we had a specific project, and it's a little late, given that that's the nineteenth, but the inter-agency coordinating committee meetings are a good place to bring a project and say, okay, who's not unlike the Reds process that we had, only is focused on one project, or everyone that might be able take a piece of this, get in a room with the project sponsor and go through their projects and see if you can find that matches for dollars. Okay, so. That's sort of what I had on economic development, unless you've got questions. Is Whitney on the line, can you tell?
I didn't see her.
I thought she was. Yeah, I think she's, she's working.
She's there.
She's there, all right, girl. Well, maybe I'll just turn over, let Whitney go through the list, I've got her outlined here, Whitney, could you do that, please?
Door, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, you're fine.
Okay. So, we are all set to begin well monitoring for our fall well season, um, it'll run throughout October. Overall, we expect to see pretty low water levels, given the dry summer that we've had and the dry spring that we were coming off of. We've heard from several well owners about having low water levels in their wells or springs on their property being dry. So, no surprises, but this is kind of across the county. I also reached out to several well drillers, and they've been fielding calls all summer from all over the county about low pump rates um, and some requests to deepen wells, so, um, it's a dry year, we know that, and so we expect to see those results reflected as we're out and about monitoring. Um, in general, just talking about the drought, um, much of the county is still in drought, according to the federal drought monitor. March to August was the second driest year on record in the county since, over the past one hundred and twenty-seven years, so we're breaking records unfortunately for all the wrong reasons on that one. Um, we are, it is projected to have a slightly wetter than average winter, but we don't expect to see enough precipitation to get the county out of drought condition, especially on the eastern side. So we expect to see a good snow, a decent snowpack, but overall precipitation won't be enough to get us out of drought condition. Any questions on well monitoring or the drought?
Whitney, what was the first driest year on record?
They didn't provide that information, I've been trying to go through their records, or to find that info, but, um, I, I don't have that available, unfortunately.
That was my only question, thank you. Any questions?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, other, okay, other updates are on dry in Butler Creek, um, we've been working with ecology in the central Clickcat Conservation District. We have settled their cultural resource review questions and have gotten permission to move forward. Um, it took a little bit of time, but Lauren over at CKCD was really great. Um, and working with ecology, so our plan now is, right now we have stream gauges in the stream that are collecting data. But last year during high flow events, they got knocked out, so our plan is to drill and install um, a more resilient gauge that's mounted to rebar, so that if we get high flows again this winter, we won't get the gauge knocked out and be in the same situation where we don't have data for a month or so.
So Whitney, we, the water year starts. Start on the first?
It started, so they, they engage in the stream collecting the data, there'll just be a transition period once Lauren's able to drill um, drill in the stream bed and get that rebar mounted.
Okay, so we'll have a full year, water year, okay, good, thanks.
Yeah, this will be our first full water year after a couple of, of missteps, so we're excited to get that data. Um, other updates is that there, um, recently, the EPA issued a temperature TMDL for the Columbia River. Um, this has been an ongoing process for several years now, but they just issued their final TMDL. Um, the TMDL incorporates the EPA Cold Water Refuge Plan, um, which, which touches some of the tributaries in the Clickcat area, including the Clickcat River and the White Salmon. And the new TMDL sets temperature targets for those tributaries, um, which can be, which they have said will then translate to getting individual TMDLs put onto tributaries feeding into the river, so. We're in the beginning stages of looking into this, but it's a complex and ongoing issue. Dave, is there anything you want to add on that?
No, no, it, it put it in the review draft, it was out for comment, this is the final on that TM, the total maximum data reload, which is a a, a rule for the Columbia, so no more comments. Perhaps people will appeal, so we'll watch, watch that, you know, something this big is likely to get appealed, so we'll see what's going on there. And I think I touched on it last.
Would we, would we, rather than doing like TMDL for the White Salmon or something, would we try some straight implementation to bring some money down here to do some good work, or? What is, what is the step?
We'll have to see what, we've not talked to, to ecology, have you talked to anyone at ecology on this yet, Whitney?
Not yet, I mean, the TMBL just came out two weeks ago, so I know now the states are the ones coordinating and setting the implementation plan, so there'll be a lot of chatter about it coming soon, I'm sure.
Yeah, so I need to talk to ecology to see what they're going to do, I, I. I'm not sure how they could move forward with the TMDL without some rule changes in ecology's water quality standards, their use-based standards. The white salmon, for example, is under a sixteen-degree, uh, temperature limit, uh, which it meets. And the TMBL from the Columbia River, they took the average of the last five years, and the average temperature for white salmon, uh, there was fifteen point five, and they want that to be the target TMDL, so how do you move clo- lower on that, so I, I they'll need to get maybe a temperature refuge standard promulgated, I don't know all of the hoops that might be there. I, it's, it's frustrating, you know, we've got rivers in Oregon who has this verbal standard, narrative standard of where they can get to twenty degrees if they've got these thermal refuges, and here we're stuck with hard numbers for streams like, you know, go to Rock Creek and. God, it's ever been sixteen degrees. At, at least since the last ice age, but, yeah, so, uh. This is going to be a long haul, so maybe is, dig into it, perhaps the more troubling side of this is, they also target flows. And so, so string flows, uh, then again, they took the five-year average and made that the target flow, so. Out of the last five years, we've been violating the ti- the target pastime, you know? Yeah, that's going to be, it's going to be interesting to see.
Yeah, that's a. My ass. That's an, that's an interesting observation, because that is what you would, if you take the average over the last five years. You're guaranteed half the time, you're not going to need it.
Yeah, and, and if it does, I need to take a look at, you know, the amendment for the, uh, uh, Columbia River and, you know, the horse fix, how exactly that was worded, uh, need to revisit that again. Uh, because, you know, if this apply, this new flow applies to, to permit example wells, then, you know, you can't use them for your house, because you can't have a dependable potable supply of water if it was set up to be violated. Shut down every, every other year, if you like, and you can plan on that. Okay. So, uh, Northern Spotted Owl, uh, Whitney dropped, she drafted a comment, she did a very good job, I think, and we submitted those in time, uh, basically petitioning with supporting arguments to have the Matrix Lands in Clickcat County excluded from critical habitat designation, and we also wrote in support of Skamania County and Lewis County's comments. And, uh, Whitney, you want to update on the lead entity?
Sure. So, um, in late September, the Salmon Recovery Funding Board awarded funding to all of our ranked projects here in the Clickcat Lead Entity. So we had a total of five, five projects, four were fully funded and one was partially funded. So in total, we had, uh, about six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars flowing into partners in our county for salmon habitat restoration, restoration planning projects and conservation acquisitions. So it was a very successful grant round. I'm also working with project sponsors to develop, uh, planned project forecast list for the next four years, which I think that started a few years ago, and this year an update is due, so look forward to sharing that with you when it's developed.
Can you, uh, Whitney, can you elaborate, can you remind me the projects that were submitted and what got funded? I mean, everything got.
Sure.
Four of the five got full funding, one did not, but what, what are the five projects, I, I, I think you told me before, but I, I'm getting old, I guess.
Happy to refresh you. So, uh, eastern side of the county, um, there, the concert, Central Clickcat Conservation District got funding to design a fish passage project for Pine Creek, um, which is, which will be a, a big ticket, um, a big money ticket to actually implement, but the first step is getting a refined design. Um, on, in the Clickcat Basin on Nider Creek, Mid-Columbia Fisheries and Yakima Nation got funding to design, um, habitat restoration projects in the Clickcat Mill area, so for that channel that runs through the Clickcat Mill site. Um, and then that Mid-Columbia Fisheries and Yakima Nation also got funding to implement a habitat restoration project on Rattlesnake Gulch, which is a tributary that feeds into Swale Creek. It's about half a mile up to Swale Que- Creek, and they'll be removing two undersized culverts and replacing, um, and removing a small earthen dam to improve steelhead habitat. And then moving over to the western side of the county, um, Underwood Conservation District got funding to develop a conservation plan for the stretch of the White Salmon between where the former Condit Dam was and Buck Creek, so essentially developing a plan for how to improve and protect habitat for salmon in that corridor for the future.
Is it not?
And then the partially.
Was that for the, the conservation for the purchase of the easements or whatever, the property? Not a conservation.
Yeah, so.
Habitat.
Yeah. Land, what they might do, so evaluating, um, opportunities for acquisition or easements. With the, the thought that at some point Pacific Core is going to divest of those lands, and they want to be prepared to help protect the land for fish into the future. And the partially funded project was for Columbia Land Trust, and that is to purchase a portion of or parcels from SDS or the future owner of SDS, um, in Upper Rattlesnake Creek.
Okay, thank you.
And other than that, we've got a, a heads up from WDFW, they've got some information posted on their website about it too, that they're updating their pri- priority habitat species maps, PHS maps, uh, for shrubs that are the east side step. Uh, we were warned to expect pretty big expansion of those priority habitat areas throughout eastern Washington, including Clickcat County, so. We'll see what, what that means. And I don't remember whoever asking, it'd be, it's frustrating that they do this, you know, years ago, I would go down Vancouver when they're updating the PH, PHS maps and sit down with Carl or whoever's working on it and see what they're doing, go look at the underlying data and information they're using to do it. Why it was appropriate. This that I, I wasn't aware this was happening, I might have missed it. Just that I, I wasn't aware of this was happening, I might have missed it. That's, that's it.
That's the end of your list?
Sure. Question, so I got an email, um, Washington Department of Commerce has funding for broadband infrastructure acceleration. A hundred and thirty-five million. Eligible entities or local governments, public ports, public utility districts. And one of my thoughts is, is I've been getting a lot of comments from people about Starlink being too expensive for the low-income people that are, you know, outside jurisdiction. And last I heard, Starlink didn't qualify for, uh, the low-income, you know, grants that the Fed, that was only CenturyLink that was getting them around here. And somebody could look that up and make sure that is, but one of my thoughts is if there's a hundred and thirty-five million available, is there a way that we could partner with the PUD or something so that, you know, that, that cost of the actual $500 for the equipment could be covered? And then because, because Starlink has this, this area for coverage under the cap dollars, that might be a way to get people, you know, in the hinterlands that we know there's, they're just too many miles away from DSL and low income and all those issues, might be able to, to expand broadband coverage.
Okay.
So something would happen.
Yeah, I think I, I got an email on that yesterday or a couple days ago. Yeah, I also wanted to be sure, I don't think I forwarded that to Jim Smith yet, he's probably aware of it, you know, they've got that.
We'll need, we'll need to have
Fiber, they're talking about running from the east side.
Yeah, and that might be another thing is, mine, the big one for me though right now is just getting it out to, you know, the actual end-user customer.
Yeah.
We're not gonna do fiber though, we're not the whole county.
No.
But if we can make it affordable for people in a better position.
Do you know if there's still a waiting line on us?
For Starlink? Yeah, about 500,000 people upstairs.
Okay, but some of us just got our notification and paid our 500 bucks and they're gonna ship that.
Congratulations, wow!
It's been a good weekend.
Congratulations.
Let us know how
Another believer.
Another believer.
Netflix for you!
A Zoom meeting for Casapita, eventually.
All right, we'll look into that. Okay. All right, thank y'all. Okay, thank you. Do you think that they would qualify for something if they're getting some of those dollars instead of CenturyLink now? Or what, are they capped free or?
So, so as I understand it, um, Starlink is getting, because of the cap, they got, CenturyLink didn't get this area, Starlink got it.
Right.
And it works out to about $600 for each individual household, this is how they bid it. But that $600 doesn't mean you're getting your stuff for free, that just means that it's just trying to come closer to subsidizing the actual cost of providing the service. From my conversation with Starlink committee.
Then would your rates might not go up as soon as anticipated?
The what?
So in other words, your rates may not go up?
As quickly as possible. But, I mean, they're burning a lot of cash.
Yeah. Yep, yep, a lot of breadboxes up there. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you gentlemen.
Yep. All right. Think anybody wants to bring up this morning, we're, we're right way ahead. How long do you guys think our 2:40 is gonna take? Cause I was hoping to drive home and make it come before six o'clock, so.
Yeah, I think, well, we're gonna make that happen, because I'm gonna do the same thing, so.
Fifteen minutes?
Although I talked to him this morning and I, I would add at least another 10 minutes, just
Ten minutes just having your come?
Yeah. Uh, I know that he needs to, because it's I guess, to share, since I don't, I can't have direct communication outside of right here, so.
I think a good idea would be to talk about, um, the, on your guys' tables for today, for, since we have time. Dan made cut changes to the minutes for the 14th, then you made changes, I made changes yesterday. Cause I could, it was sent to me in a PDF form, so I couldn't. And so I just wanted to see where, how you guys, how you gentlemen want to go on the same page, right?
So what you guys have right now are the only changes that Dave, if you wrote them out on the paper, gave them to me. They were very minor, grammatical changes, like
Here's the already in here, or?
His are what you're looking at now, and then your comments between you and Dan are printed. So then, because they're so, they vary so much.
Right.
So I don't know how, like, there's not really a way to combine them because they all vary so much. But Dave's were very, very, very minor compared to Jacob and his. I did, I restored.
The last one I saw had my changes except for the end, so, but this one has them.
His might work too, because I haven't seen him. So, so it shows here, like, on yours, it shows commented, it doesn't show any change. So is that like you were looking to make a change or asking?
No, I, my comment was to edit.
Highlight it to this and be the new language.
And then what I'll do is I'll pull it out right now, and then I will make the changes as I'm told verbally. And then when everybody has the same thing.
So on the one that, that Dan has the front page, I would put his
Page one.
Page one, Commissioner Christopher required and received clarification regarding road maintenance. And then from there says road maintenance caused by damage from solar parked trucks.
Yeah.
That would make sense. So right after road maintenance and then put cause by damage from solar parked trucks, and then delete the rest of that.
So it's from trucks or traffic?
And then the page two, Dan wanted to delete it.
So I'm looking at yours just to see if it's just easier that way, so. I'm assuming the red means
That's what I changed to, right?
Do you strike through as in?
So the red, so Jake's edits on the page two. We're pending the first one, Commissioner Christopher.
Actually, we're not done with, we saw the top of page three.
Oh, oh, it's just the bottom of page two.
Yes, because of one, because we have his comment three and your comment three are not closed. On page three.
No, page on yours, it's the bottom of page two, your comment three.
Oh, good. Oh, I was gonna strike out mine entirely, because we took Jake's, but this is two different sources. Cause he covered a lot of comment three when, in his wording of comment two, I think. You're right, you're right, you're right, comment three is the bottom of Jake's. We're right underneath your
Jake's is fine there.
Yeah, I'm fine with that except the, or resume the regular regular, we have to strike the I'm fine with meeting agenda.
The, the old, because it would resume the regular meeting agenda.
So you straight up with the, resume the regular
Regular meeting agenda, so.
Board pending, top four. Was it this meeting, Dan, where, um, the prosecuting attorney stated though that we still need to verify the
No, I think that was
It was on an email.
Okay, it's an email.
Okay.
We needed to verify what?
That it's not a felon that it's being sold to.
No, that was a, we did this and then we asked for a legal opinion.
And that's where that
And then that came back with a legal opinion, I still don't understand.
Okay, so that
So that's a fine line.
Okay.
I'm good, but yeah, your comment four looks fine to me.
And then finally, comment five too.
Yeah. The D on Dan's.
Comment five on Dan's?
Yeah, it's actually closer to what like I was struggling with what was, because I had altered that too slightly and it was, this is actually a better bit.
But speaking of comment five in the text, and you said that Krista wanted to have a meeting, I sent her an email and said, you know, I'm happy to meet, but we probably should schedule her time in the chair because they're all gonna wanna know. Because the issue is the if the state gets back their tax, their, their state tax, we lose our tax. So the plan, tax issue is twofold, it's us not losing our share. But then there's also the longer tax strategy, I haven't heard back from her, so.
And this is the depreciation of energy projects, correct?
Uh, one of depreciation, one of the sales tax rebates during green energy.
I guess she did want to have a private meeting with you first before coming to the board.
I will walk it there, maybe I'll get a response that way.
Comment six, I'm, uh, I'm fine with that considering I didn't drop the letter.
We had trouble for that too, by the way, yes. A message from his agent
Oh.
Um, scolding us for editing the document.
Well, it's, when his name is on the letters, you can do that.
It was a pretty good, short scolding of how dare you.
So he just wanted us to sign it?
Sign it with our
Put his stuff on it and send it back, and since we edited it and sent it ourselves, he got it.
I didn't see, it's, I recall it was, it was our name on the letter.
I'm just passing on, it was like a one sentence, how dare you?
I don't know. Interesting.
I didn't respond. Okay, so six was good.
Yeah.
Jake, on yours, if you want to back up a page, you have Commissioner Anderson chose straight through, did not remove himself, you needed to in there.
Joe's not to. Okay, so, and then yours would be Commissioner Christopher stated he did not recue, remove himself because many searches. And I'm fine with what you wrote for your comment eight.
We'll have them both.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I didn't want to be wrong, it's something there.
You get that, Eddie?
Sorry, because now you're going in between the two of them.
Right, well, there's both, really.
So, so the part about me comes off my, the part about Dan comes off of his.
Okay.
Commissioner Christopher stated.
Okay, okay.
Then we can change the, there are the two.
Yep, oh, and then, don't forget to add Or for all you guys?
And I can do this in the future if you guys want to. That way then it's just, if you, if I send them out and then you make your edit and you send them back.
If there's
Print them off with the changes and then split it to you guys.
If there's this, as far as they're concerned, if it's kind of like this, we should probably do it like this. If it's just how we reworded the solar truck thing.
Right.
Pick one that works.
Okay.
Deal with it, as long as it isn't
When things hit the news, getting
When things aren't individual, we might need to sit down and do it this way. Sealing with general wordage, I don't care how it's worded, if they got one of the better
Is where did you word?
In the next two meetings minutes, probably I'll do that. You guys are actually making a statement and you're actually asking for them to be noted. So then if I do that, I want to make sure that, you know, you have an opportunity to review them.
When, when we make a statement that says, this statement is for the record, usually the best thing to do is watch the video and make sure that it's the same way that it was stated.
I have, but then it's been changed even after that, and so I just want to make sure that everybody sees that.
However.
It's, it's all good, I mean, we try to do it as accurately, I think the, I mean, it is sometimes when it's if you're in the news, although sometimes if it is, a statement is a statement and that is the statement is I guess, well, I guess if we ever get to the point, and I'm not, I'm, I'm fine with all of these are fine. I think they're, especially if they're, if they're specific things that you are being attributed to what you said, then you should be comfortable with what, that that's an accurate reflection of what you said. And I'm not, not gonna have any issue with it. But
In my pile, I was like, ah, you know how I throw stuff away?
Oh, this is from, uh, oh, yeah, it's from the election.
That's all done, you can, you can do that.
Recycle.
Recycle. Anything else you guys want to discuss?
Not that it will come up, but I would like to encourage us to have more. I guess I could use the word civil meetings. If one of us are speaking and someone on Zoom is shouting over us. I know I'm not going to respond to citizen comment if they're not, because if I wait and listen to them speak for three minutes and don't interrupt. And then I try to respond and get shouted over the top of. That's not a civil meeting. So if we're not gonna get them, I just won't respond. Because I'm not gonna get it up. Shouting that. So like last week, was it? That doesn't give us a chance to say anything either, so that's just my opinion.
Okay.
I think that also works and keeps you from gabbling. If the three minutes is up, if you just point over and somebody hits mute.
Is it appropriate to, is it appropriate to, I mean, I've done it in a meeting where I muted people, I just said, you're now muted. We have muted people. I would use that as a. If they would not, if they wouldn't follow the.
I would just, you get your three minutes and then, oop, here's the mute, and that way you don't have to strike your gavel, it doesn't seem as harsh, and then you can just say, thank you, ma'am, or sir, your three minutes is up. And move on, and you don't have that friction that happened to gavel people because they didn't hear the alarm clock go off in three minutes. But then they're also now muted, if you make a comment, they're not screaming back over the top of you. So that's just my personal opinion.
If you mute them and they're still, and when you're speaking to them, they ain't gonna hear you, because they're sorry talking.
Exactly.
Yeah, I would, I would, I, I'm fine with, I'll keep it the same way where I will, you know, when there are three minutes left, I'll get her attention. And if I have to gavel, then that's fine, I will, if somebody, I would, you know, in my own mind, I would only reserve the muting somebody if they're not following the rules. If they are, where they are talking back over you and it's turning into an argument, then that's what we've done in the past where people. Where they just are non-responsive, they're not gonna comply, where they're, they're really having an argument.
I'm just thinking, last week, there was two of them, and they both just kept going, so I stopped talking. So if that's. However.
Well, I will, I will do my best to try to have a civil. Meeting that follows the rules and. We will all get our chance to run meetings in the future, so. Well, you can always, Dave, you can always point to Leirai and we can press the new button if it's getting.
That's all it was, that.
Yeah.
And it's been a couple that way, too.
Yeah, right, I said, please mute them, they just won't, and you just mute them. It's unfortunate that we can't have a civil conversation. What happened to civil society? Yeah.
Well, and I think because that happens, the others see it, and then they think it's okay, and then they do it. So we're encouraging. I hate to say the word bad behavior, but uncivil behavior.
You know, if we keep this up, we're not gonna be the most watched show in Clickatuck County from one to 1:30. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Another thing, and I thought about this a lot over this last weekend, is you could go back to just recording action, it'd still be live. It's live if they wanna watch it. But the only thing, it wouldn't be available for someone to watch after work. I'm talking the recording part of it, if you had it live and you already recorded action items.
I don't know, I, I personally think with the way things are going, and as we're continuing to become less civil, and that people are attributing statements and making stuff up. The recordings are gonna be a thing that, that you can at least go back to and say, you know, this is, this is what actually happened when, you know, the rumor mill of COVID gets going.
Yeah, while, while we are mandated by state law to do Zoom, it's probably best to have the recording of the whole Zoom. Once COVID is over and you're not mandated by state law to do Zoom, we will probably have a discussion and a vote on whether we're continuing to do so.
Okay.
It has been a good tool. Where people too have access, they can actually be here in person.
I will say that when I ran for commissioner, I ran stating, you know, I want transparency and the people that have access. And so I, I'd be a no vote for taking Zoom away, for sure. There's a lot of people on the West End that it's a long drive to get up here to comment. And to take two hours out of your day, or two, three hours out of your day, when instead you can just take 15 minutes of your lunch break and still have your open communication, that's, to me, that's good governance.
That also helps in other ways, too, as in maybe a public hearing. If the staff and, you know, everybody doesn't have to travel to certain areas, if you can have a meeting, you can still have access, even night meetings. I think that's very. Efficient.
Oh, I like going to community council meetings and not having to drive out there, and I can still make dinner and spend time with my kid and all that. Yeah, I would say on balance, it's been a positive thing, I think there's some negative, not, there's not negative aspects of, of the access, it's the. Use of the, or misuse of the, of the format sometimes. Which can be, but that's like anything, it's, there's always, there's, there, you know, you can take anything good and turn it to a bad purpose. That's just human nature. And it is, yeah, I'm not in favor, I, I, as far as the, you know, live streaming and stuff, I, whether it's mandated or not, I think it's a good thing, because we do, we have a lot more people that are engaged. The question is gonna be the, and we'll have a discussion about the, you know, do we archive every minute of every day of every utterance or not, I don't know.
Well, I think IT needs to be brought into that discussion.
Right, because there's some, there's some.
Storing a lot of metadata, and it's.
Right.
It's gonna be a cost to it eventually.
And, and you, you know, like, the budget discussions and all that, like, are Thursdays, I don't think we need to really record that, I mean, that's, will. Be tedious.
What about the morning workshop sessions like now, should we not, should we only record in the afternoon, the business agenda portion?
See, that could make sense, too, because you're, you're burning video recordings by a public works update, and then whatever else we have on the morning workshop.
Right.
You know, it's still.
I would like to hear from, from some of the citizens, because I mean, the public work updates are really good, and some people actually watch, watch those. To know what's going on.
Right. But do you watch the recording later to get that information? Well, I mean, they might be tuning in live, but I don't know that they're actually watching the recordings.
Can we see how many views we have on each recording?
I don't know, or.
You can, but I don't know that they're fast forwarding through the morning session here the afternoon, unless you broke it down into two recordings and did the morning and then ended it, this is recording number one for the night. And this is recording number two, then you can watch. To see who's actually watching, does anybody care about the morning? But that would be the only way you'd be able to determine it, really.
So one, on note that you did ask about bringing IT into the discussion, is we are currently out of room. Being able to put the meetings on the website, so they are looking into that.
Well, that's just, it had seven years.
Right. Wow.
Back storage data to that, and we could be running into a problem.
Right. Well, I think that's a reasonable, I think it's a. It, it's reasonable to balance the economic impact, the budget impact of the county to the actual benefit and the use, if there's. If there's one person that's looking, you know, at the workshop session, is that necessarily a good use?
So would that be an okay thing that you guys could go with, is break the meeting up into two parts, so you have the morning workshop, and then you have the afternoon, and we'll give it till whatever, a month, two months, end of the year, whatever. Look at page views and decide whether we wanna continue recording the morning workshop.
Well, right now, the morning workshop on the 14th had 195 views. The workshop on the 9th had 115 views.
Were they broken apart between?
Yeah, so, so on the 14th, the morning had 195, of course, the afternoon, which was a little contentious, had a 927. Also, we are, so there is a way to.
On the morning, well, only if she recorded.
Okay, well, so that's why I said, so the.
Oh, they do it on a meeting that wasn't.
Workshop on the 9th, right, which would be a Thursday, that had 115 views, so you're still getting 115 views for your workshop, so that's quite, quite a. Spark for me to watch in the second time, but I don't like hearing myself speak. But like the, the 10th, our actual commissioner meeting, there's 572 views versus our workshops, there's 164 to 16. Well, let's go back, though, and look at. You know, six weeks ago. Okay. Or. Six weeks ago. Even that's not totally.
Are you saying that the budget workshop had 150 views on a Thursday? So that's an awful lot of people for a budget workshop.
So if I go back to five, five eighteen.
Well, I don't know if they watched it later via recording.
Yeah, five eighteen, we're still running between 300 views on our commissioner day and 188 views on the workshop. Wow, that's really surprising. Okay, somebody, somebody's, somebody's watching. So, what happens, like, I go back and I can only go back to seven, six, six. So like, what happens to all the stuff from the beginning of the year?
It's up there, it's just out of order.
Yeah. Because what I was giving.
Oh, there's some three.
Yeah.
Well, it sorts them out.
Putting them, you know, with the first, you know, January through December, then it wasn't really making sense because the newest ones that can pop, so I decided to just leave it that way. And I switched it halfway through the year, so it wasn't.
I know, because we use Google, Rob's looking into the YouTube side of it, and then it could all be stored on YouTube's. Rather than on our own county servers, and then it would be faster for people.
Yeah, but you might have a legality problem there, except if YouTube crashes and you lose your data, you can't comply with, so your request.
Like YouTube's, YouTube works with Google, you, the YouTubers, he was saying, it's a bunch of people do that, a bunch of, they have Google, because, you know, we're running Google. And then there's the YouTube, YouTube's on Google, so it's the same thing.
Are we storing this on Google?
We do store, we have an R drive.
Through Google, or is that on our?
I think we're all on Google now.
Okay.
Yeah, but no matter what, when, when we record it, it's still being stored onto her computer.
Yes.
Plenty of space, and then we upload it, and so if somebody comes in and Google crashes or something.
We.
Yeah, you always have the backup.
That was my concern, as long as.
We do, but if YouTube and Google crash, well, it'll look like yesterday, but.
The world ends, actually, the world starts afresh, that would be perfect, what they will shut down for like.
Facebook shutting down for life, that'd be a good start.
Yeah, I mean, you can all go back to civilized world again.
Just kidding. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to recess until the afternoon session.
I would second motion.
Okay, I have a motion of second to recess the meeting until our afternoon session at one o'clock, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, we are recessed. One o'clock. I will call the meeting to the order, let the record show all three commissioners are present, we will start with our opening pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to. Stop the business.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of second on the business agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I don't know if we wanna approve the minutes of the 14th with our.
I'm fine with it.
Our edits. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the 14th. You have a motion of second on the September 14th minutes, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Which brings us to citizen comment, this is an opportunity for folks to. Comment to the board of commissioners on items that are not on the agenda later in the. Business, with business that's not on the agenda later, I would ask folks to limit their comments to three minutes. We have people in chambers and online, so we will alternate back and forth, but I will start in chambers first, yes, ma'am. I, no, actually, behind you, yes, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I do have my clock. Go ahead, as far as if they're, because I did, I was, someone did request that they wanted, they had a six-minute comment that they were gonna split between them. And so that seems reasonable to me, so. Would you, you both come forward then. We can get you on the mic. On the mic, please. Yep, that'll work, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Michaelina Rock, and I live in White Salmon, Washington, and I'm part of a group of people submitting a petition today that we've titled. Clickatuck County Residents for Health, Safety, and Fair Representation for All. While we only began collecting signatures five days ago, we have approximately 230. Our county and country are at a critical place due to many crises, but at this moment, mostly due to misinformation and the sowing of division. What we need from you is leadership, leadership that brings people together to work for the well-being of all of us. We are here today to ask you for unity in our county, to work for all of us, both the east and west sides of the county, and to work so that all residents of Clickatuck County can experience health and safety. And what follows is the petition, I'll begin and Becky will finish. At the September 14th Clickatuck County Commissioners' meeting, Washington State Public Meeting laws were disregarded. Law-abiding citizens on Zoom were removed, county staff left the room in fear for their safety. An unlawful, threatening, and potentially dangerous citizen were allowed to control our county business and commissioners. These unruly citizens talked with the commissioners about COVID-19 health mandates in terms of freedom and liberty. Disregarding that maintaining a safe and healthy society has always required a balance between personal liberties and the good of all. Vaccine mandates are not new and have been instrumental in fighting measles, mumps, rubella, hepatitis B, among others. We have traffic laws, seatbelt laws, food service laws, seasonal burn bans, and many more laws, because we acknowledge that we live in a community. And our actions affect each other. The ethical standard of people working together, taking care of one another, and treating others with respect is pervasive across the world. Our world is facing the unparalleled threats of a global pandemic and a global climate crisis. In order to meet these challenges, we must confront them together as we, not me. Misinformation and refusal to follow Washington State's laws and mandates threaten our county healthcare system, county government, economy, and the safety and health of our residents. We insist that our county elected officials act as leaders on COVID issues rather than playing politics. Instead of engaging in pointless discussion about rights, the commissioners can lead the way toward following the best, most up-to-date protocols. Of testing, contact tracing, quarantining, and providing accurate statistical information to residents, as well as following Washington State mandates. Regarding vaccinations and masking. We, the undersigned, request that you, our elected county, county commissioners, Dave Sotter, Jacob Anderson, and Dan Chris. Publicly and officially. Acknowledge that COVID-19 is a very real health crisis that threatens our well-being and our healthcare system. Acknowledge that misinformation about COVID contributes to the public health crisis. Strengthen our county health department's efforts to provide correct information. Acknowledge that vaccine mandates, mask mandates, rigorous contact tracing, readily available testing, and quarantine policies save lives. Strengthen efforts to improve the county's response to the COVID threat. Support our public health officials and healthcare workers. Commit to taking the concerns of all constituents seriously. Commit to an orderly and inclusive process of government. Continue to fully support agencies who help our low-income neighbors. And we have a printed copy of the petition as well as the signatures.
Give it to the clerk. The, your second name, please, ma'am.
Oh, Becky Miles.
Becky Miles. Thank you. You did, for the record, you have a minute eighteen seconds left over. Thank you. Actually, I'm going to go with our tradition, I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to Zoom now and ask. We are a public comment. Uh, Gabrielle Gilbert, you got your hand raised, go ahead.
Hi, I support the, um, petition that was just read to you and thank the, um, constituents that brought that forward. I want to speak about the last few minutes before you went, um, into recess where you discussed Zoom meetings. And whether or not you would continue that, I want to thank Jake and you, um, uh, David for supporting Zoom meetings. It is the great equalizer in having our voices heard and it's also this transparency and the idea that government needs to be. Accessible to all the constituents. I think that, um, the hypocrisy that a commissioner would discuss about civil discourse when he hasn't apologized for his actions. Of putting up his middle finger to a constituent is still forthcoming. And I take issue with the idea that he would attempt to mute or, um, dismantle the Zoom or the archiving of these meetings. The idea that you would accept forty people to come into a meeting. And take over the public commentary for past the thirty minutes and into two hours. And you entertain that and yet you take issue with women who come in front of you to discuss your behavior. And to hold you accountable to that behavior. And that is where we want to keep Zoom open and open comment and not be muted and not be silenced. And that it is important for all government that it is transparent and that the people have access to it. Thank you for your time and what's more, I wanted to make quick note in the article that Dan Christopher accused two people of, um, orchestrating. What happened at the meeting that caused him to lift his finger, he is responsible for his actions and no orchestration ever was planned. Or there was no, um, idea that he would ha- um, respond in the way that he did and that falls solely on him. And as an adult, he should take responsibility for that. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, in the, no, actually, yes, if it's, yes, it's your turn. We can please have your name for the record.
Candy Magnussen, I don't have to be here, but I'm here to help my neighbors and my county. The same county you're supposed to be helped, okay? I have a farm, I could put silver panels set up, but I couldn't do it to my neighbors. I'm, I'm situated with houses around me, I couldn't do that to them, I love my neighbors. We get a little ungood, um, people say, okay. That's their property, they can do anything and go with it. Well, as a realtor for twenty-seven years, I've seen a hell of a lot of, uh, court dates. People go into court and suing each other and it's usually on land. Borders, um, land and water, okay? So don't tell me that you can do anything you want on your plant without being sued, because that's not true. There's no secrets in Golddale, believe me, there isn't any. So I find out there's at least eight hundred acres south of Golddale now that have signed up for sort of. And it's like cancer, it's going to keep going, guys. So if this goes through, we don't stop it, you're going to come up Mary Hill Gray. And you're going to see our beautiful, beautiful valley that we will just look at when we come up. With silver pants. There's not going to be any cows, horses, whatever. No wheat, no hay, nothing. And if you don't think that, don't affect everybody else's. Animals and hay and meat and deaths, okay? So I, I would know, when my neighbor, um, down the road. The Mary Hill Wimery wanted a boundary line, uh, for him, he was a farmer, if he, they could have more plant. He said, sure, I got a letter, I have a month down the road, I got a letter, tell me that. You guys send out letters anywhere telling you what's going to happen to us? That's what I'd like to know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know the secret crap out of here and start telling us what's going to happen to us, okay? Thanks.
I'm going to go back to Zoom. Somebody on Zoom, raise your hand, unmute yourself, star six. Have you seen anybody? Okay, I will go back to the, yes ma'am. Please give us your name if you would please for the reference.
Good afternoon, my name's Gigi Pomerantz and I live in White Salmon. I'm a retired family nurse practitioner after almost forty years of practice. As a nurse practitioner, I've always stressed the importance of prevention with my patients. It is both much easier and less expensive to prevent an illness rather than treat one. That is why we encourage people not to smoke, maintain a healthy weight and to get regular exercise. It is also why the state mandates immunizations for all children attending school in accordance with the conditions of chapter two forty-six dash one oh five. A child is required to be vaccinated against or show proof of immunity for the following vaccine preventable diseases. Before attending school or childcare center, chicken pox, dip area, German measles, hematoos influenza B. Hepatitis B, measles, mumps, pneumococcal disease, polio, tetanus and whooping cough. This is what public health is about, keeping all of us well by preventing the spread of communicable diseases. Governor Inslee has mandated COVID nineteen vaccines for all state employees, healthcare workers and educators at every level. Thank you, Governor Inslee, for being concerned about the health of the citizens of Washington. In addition, the governor has mandated the wearing of masks in all public indoor settings to prevent the spread of this deadly disease, especially. Amongst those who are not vaccinated. The unvaccinated make up ninety-four percent of all deaths in Washington from COVID from June to September. While you all have been arguing against masks and vaccines, an average of fourteen cases per day were reported in Click attack county in September. A seventeen percent increase from the average two weeks prior. Since the beginning of the pandemic, at least one in thirteen residents of Click attack county have been infected. A total of one thousand six hundred and sixty-four reported cases. Sometimes that number doesn't seem so big, but we're not that big of a county, one in thirteen residents. Right now, Click attack county is at extremely high risk for unvaccinated people. September was the month with the most reported cases in Click attack county. And there are no ICU beds in Click attack county. That means if you get very ill from COVID, they'll transfer you to Yakima or across the river to Oregon. The danger and the cost of such a transfer is more than any of us would want to bear. I urge you, the board of county commissioners, to publicly state your endorsement of Governor Inslee's vaccine and mask mandates. For the safety and health of all the citizens of Click attack county. And that you demand that these be enforced by both the board of health and the sheriff, thank you.
I'm going to go back to Zoom now, if there's anybody that wishes to provide public comment. Please, oh, I have, uh, Luke Throop, you have raised your hand, go ahead.
Thank you, gentlemen, I would like to directly, uh, respond to both the nurse Gigi who just talked about the ninety-four percent. Of cases being unvaccinated in between June and September about, uh, public health and also earlier the comment regarding, um, rights. And treating others with respect, the truth of the matter is that the information that you're hearing in these comments is just patently false. So I'd like to go ahead and quote directly from the CDC website. Here it says that epidemiologic findings indicate COVID nineteen is less severe than SARS or MERS. So that is a direct quote from the CDC, we did not have mask mandates or vaccine mandates for the SARS or MERS crisis. So that's an important distinction. When it comes to stating that ethical standards are treating with each other with respect and then saying that it's pointless to discuss rights, that is a direct contradiction. Each person has a, has a right to decide whether or not they want to be vaccinated, particularly with the new vaccination that's just been, uh, put out on the market. Though it has gained FDA approval, it doesn't have long-term studies to support that. As far as case counts. The CDC, again, to do a direct quote from the CDC website, a significant proportion of infections across all age groups are asymptomatic. A significant proportion of infections across all age groups are asymptomatic, what that means is that. A lot of tests and a lot of cases are not actually people that are exhibiting symptoms of COVID nineteen. If you were to look at the symptoms of COVID nineteen, you would find that they are identical to the seasonal flu, again, from the CDC website. The people who are actually passing away and dying from the flu, or I'm sorry, dying from COVID nineteen, as sad as that is, and to grieve the loss of those who have lost loved ones. The CDC, again, sorting the CDC.gov website, ninety-five percent of all COVID deaths have underlying conditions, ninety-five percent of all COVID deaths have underlying conditions. So we have cases, they're driving public policy that may not be symptomatic, we have people that are losing life, but it's actually not due strictly to COVID nineteen. It's COVID nineteen plus hypertension, diabetes, Alzheimer's, cancer, et cetera. So we have a lopsided and disproportionate perspective driving public policy. I would request now the opportunity to come to the board in open chambers and share with you a half an hour presentation of facts. Quoting the CDC, the FDA, the National Institute for Health, the World Health Organization and other reputable sources to help provide some. Proper perspective instead of the simple liberal propaganda that you keep getting in these meetings. Would you be willing to hear that presentation?
This is public comment, this is not.
I understand that this is public comment, I'm asking, in this time of public comment, can we set a time to have that presentation? And everybody would be welcome to have this information, I want to share it so that we're not, uh, letting public policy be driven by propaganda. Instead of, uh, proper examination of evidence and fact.
Just, just, I mean, for myself, I'm going to stop your time, I don't want to use your time. But you can understand, at least for my, myself, who am I opening if I have thirty minutes, I don't know what your credentials are, I don't know what. Then are we going to have thirty-minute presentations from anybody across the whole county? Or I guess across the state, so I, I mean, there is a proper time, the, the board of health, at a board of health meeting. If there are folks that want to provide a, uh, information, then I guess that, that would be appropriate, but I. I would be very cautious about opening the door to allowing presentations from the public in general. That's my personal opinion, but I will defer to my seat names. You want to add something or not?
I, I would just say, Luke, I know the last time you were in the chambers, you did not wear your mask, you did not follow the procedures set forth by the board. Um, that gives me pause in, in saying yes, uh, my advice to you would be to, uh, do your presentation. And, and record it via Zoom or something of that nature and I would be happy to watch it when I have time, not during a public meeting. Um, that would be my best advice.
And Luke, this is Commissioner Christopher, I have seen your videos, so I am aware of your information. Um, and if we did do something like that, I would hope that it would be at a board of health meeting where we're actually discussing health and not telling.
Okay, so you have, you actually have two seconds left on your timer, so.
Two seconds, all right, well, in two seconds, I would say, uh, thank you for considering that, I do believe that the information as far as a health board is. You know, this is policy that's driving county policy, so it is a health board thing, but it's also a county commissioner consideration, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, okay, I'm going to come back to the, that was online, back to the room. Actually, both raised them at the same time, you good much, all right, Mister Wagner.
Greg Wagner, Goldendale, number six, some concerning information was brought to my attention by a fellow citizen. He observed you three commissioners at the local bar and restaurant downtown Goldendale on September fourteenth drinking alcoholic beverages. Tequila margaritas and beer, Mister Anderson, did you drink tequila margaritas or beer that day?
No, sir, I don't like tequila margaritas.
Mister Christopher, did you drink any alcoholic beverages that day?
Citizen comment, I'm not doing question and answer. I really don't care.
No, I did, but I'm not partaking in.
Is it, uh, what is the county policy on drinking alcoholic beverages while you're on the job?
I am unaware of a policy, um, one way or the other, but I would.
Would you think that would be considered good conduct?
Again, this is citizen comment, so you can.
I don't think it's, would be.
What do you think is?
Every place I've ever worked, it was zero tolerance on drugs, alcohol and stealing. I just wonder why this county doesn't have a code of conduct or a code of ethics that would apply to all the workers in the county. With regards to situations just like this, if you were over drinking alcohol.
Mister Wagner. Uh, have you spoken with our HR department and got all, you do your research, I know you.
I want to talk to him, he couldn't give me any real definite answer.
And.
That's why I asked, why don't they have some kind of code of conduct or code of ethics?
You have seen the county's policies, he gave you a copy of that, correct?
I can't really hear you for that.
Sorry, we're building, he gave you a copy of all of that?
No, he didn't give me anything.
Okay, well, we do have a county policy handbook that is.
I asked for that, he never gave it to me.
Posted a one.
So do you guys ever go over there and drink alcohol? Have you ever done it in the past besides September fourteenth? The owner says that you have.
I'm, I'm not going to answer, I.
Well, you don't have to answer.
I know, but by you, you are, you know. Sir, you know full well the answers to your questions, you've got a cop, you have seen a copy, you have interviewed. Our human, human resources, you know there is a personnel policy that covers such things. That is certainly true. No, that's not the question, personnel policies are not, elected officials are not covered under the personnel policy. They are not considered employees for the purposes of the personnel policy.
So what policy do you follow?
That's, we follow the policies, the remedies that are available to citizens are the same as are laid out in the RCWs. And that state law. I'll give you a little more time. No, I'm going to go back to Zoom, if there is someone on Zoom who wishes to make a comment. Either raise your hand or star six, unmute yourself. I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm going to go back in the room, you were next ma'am. Have your name for the record.
Hal Arnold, Trout Lake, Washington. I'm here in support of the petition and. In particular, I'm here in support of the very reasonable tone of that petition. I haven't written any of you any letters about what happened to September fourteenth because. I was very angry and I didn't want to say something that I would regret. So I'm pleased that this petition has come forward and raised the possibility of discussing. The issues about September fourteenth and COVID and whatnot. In a way with some mutual understanding and respect. I've often said, and you've probably heard me say this, that government should be where we listen to each other, learn from each other. Try to find common ground to build on. There are many of us, and people who signed that petition are just the tip of the iceberg, you've seen us in the elections. At the local and state level. There are many of us who have tried for years to get successive generation of commissioners to listen and to care about our points of view. And I think with little success, which is why I was angry when I saw what happened on September fourteenth. Where people who were boisterous, unruly and uncaring for the rules of your meetings are threatening towards you and others. Those people dominated and got your attention in a way that the people represented by this petition have never been able to. And that's very frustrating. Laws can be interpreted in many ways, you must know that, it's not a thing that's black and white. In this county, generations of commissioners have applied the law and interpreted it in one way only, which is to favor what I call the settler mentality. And I'm gonna be frank with you here, because I've been talking about this for years amongst my friends, but I've never really brought it out in public, because I thought it was just my shorthand. But the settler mentality is, it's all for me. I get to take and do what I want, resources are endless. And that's the policy that I've seen this commission over generations now support those kinds of policies. It's time to break down that wall. Those of us here today represent a significant number of people. As I've said, we have ideas and insights and principles that are useful, that can be useful. And we care about Click Tech County as much as anybody else in this county. We're tired of being ignored, shut down, dismissed from our side. We'll have to stop, but I appreciate your attention.
Hand that in so we can see the rest of it, Pat?
Can you leave that, the rest of it, if you want?
I mean, I could leave it, but I doubt you're gonna be able to read it.
Okay, I'm gonna go back on, in Zoom, see if there's anybody. Not seeing anybody.
Lynn Mason.
Oh, Lynn Mason, go ahead. You are our last commenter of the discussion.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. I just wanna say I support the folks that are showing up today in support of masks and vaccine mandates. You know, the reality is, is that none of us wanted to wear a mask. I mean, I was also in that camp of people that got vaccinated and was hoping that I didn't have to wear a mask again. Nobody wanted to wear a mask again. We don't wanna be in the position we're in, but we are. A friend of mine this morning just sent me a screenshot that Click Tech County is an extreme risk category for COVID. We're bordered by also extreme risk states that are, that are maxing out their ability to treat sick people, sick people of all kinds, even people that have heart attacks, strokes, et cetera. We have experts that have come and spoke to us, and we need to listen to those people because they are doctors, they are nurses, they are experts in their field. These are the people that have worked in healthcare for decades, and these are the people, this is their speciality. And I support us listening to them and supporting them. And I think the participants that showed up today to speak on behalf of us that didn't, you know, none of us wanted to get vaccinated, none of us wanted to wear masks. But here we are, and this is what we have to do. This is an ever-changing situation. The, the vet, the, the virus has mutated, and it's changing, it's a changing situation. So the guidelines have changed accordingly, and that's where we're at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, concludes our public comment period.
Okay, I was trying to take notes as everybody speaks, as I try to do every day. My typing isn't so great, so it might have to get through me a little bit with this. Thank you for filling out your document and handing it in with 200 applications. You can see this is a very contentious issue, considering the other side had 200, 200 names on one that they put on the opposite direction in the same amount of time. You see the same thing from both sides. It's a very difficult situation to have those type of conversations, knowing about what we do about this virus that's changing. Now, there was this statement, and, and people like to think that we are of the extremes. When I was elected, I was elected to represent everyone and to respect everyone's opinions. And I respect your opinions, just as I respect the opinions of the other side. We have the difficult choices, commissioners and Board of Health members, of following and setting that policy in path and where we go. I'm, I'm wearing my mask, I'm a firm believer in people who want to get the vaccine, getting the vaccine. I also see where the other side is coming from, and I respect their opinions, while I may not personally disagree, agree with them. I will say, though, that the county has been working non-stop throughout COVID. We have done so much, we have given out thousands of vaccines, we have taken the vaccines to the people, we have taken them out to the minority populations, to our agricultural populations. We have continued to do everything, we do contact tracing, we do everything that you're asking. You, you don't always see it because it's our health department that's working, but we've been fighting this on the front lines, and our, and our employees have been working tirelessly for 19 months or whatever it is now to fight COVID, and we're doing everything that we can. And we will continue to do so, because we all want to get through this together.
Thank you.
And thank you for driving up here. So much easier to do it on, on, on Zoom, but showing up means a lot.
Quick question, would you be having, since there's not enough time, would you have it later?
I could, actually, I will, we don't, we typically have a public hearing scheduled at 1:30. We don't today, coincidentally, and so we actually do have about 15 minutes of extra time. And so I would entertain that we can extend if there are still folks that wanna provide public comment, that they can do that.
You do? Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then that's, that's what we're gonna do, I'm gonna use my, what limited power I have as the chair to extend the agenda. And so we will, we're gonna continue public comment. I will go back and forth, though. So I'm gonna go in the room here, I, I saw at least three people that wanted to give public comment. Let's continue. You guys roll the dice or wrestle for it or whatever, go ahead.
Is it true we can remove our masks to speak?
When you're not, it's not true that you can remove your mask, it is while you're speaking.
While I speak.
Yes, that is considered.
We're a producer, yes.
Okay. That's, that's what I said while I speak.
Yes.
So I'm not muffled, muzzled or whatever. So I wanted to talk quickly about the rescinding of the moratoriums for the solar ordinances. I was wondering, did the commissioners produce a finding of fact for that rescinding of the moratorium? Was there a finding of facts produced with that rescinding?
I can't answer that one yet.
Okay, okay, cuz if you could get back to me, Commissioner, Chair Sodder, since you're ahead of the guys here. And then I thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for saying you support all the people of the county in, on our choices or our freedom of our own bodies. That's very important to say that we all have our own choices because when you do mandates, you take away our freedom of choices. So thank you for supporting that. And also, I wanted to touch on, I guess I'm all over the face, the code of ethics in our county. I would ask that you, I know you have a thousand irons in the fire, that that can be something that's brought into your conversation. You know, it, I believe our county deserves to have code of ethics. Every county pretty much has them, and I believe that if you want a transparent and ethical county, that you should have a code of ethics. So I would ask that you could put those on our books. And then also, if it is true that the commissioners are consuming alcohol beverages during your lunch period, I don't know, there was a question, no, you know, it was, it was said on September 14th that a, a public citizen observed two of the commissioners drinking alcohol at a, a local establishment during their lunch break. And then that should not be a thing, because your oath says to discharge your abilities to the, discharge your duties to the best of your abilities. And I do not feel if you're drinking alcoholic beverages during your lunch, lunch period and coming back here to make important decisions such as rescinding moratoriums for solar ordinances, which is huge, and we've asked for those ordinances and our voices haven't been heard, that you're not able to do that while under the influence. And also, I'd like to remind you that, that citizens have spoke our voices, we have asked you for solar ordinances, we have asked you, our voices of the people have asked you to protect our farmland. This is serious, this is not the legacy you wanna hang your hats on. To come back 10 years from now and say, oh my God, we took away all their, all their food resources, we took away their ability to do, raise animals and grow wheat because we put China solar panels all over our, our valuable agricultural land. The people have spoken, please protect your county and listen to us and do as we ask, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to online. If there's anybody. Not seeing anybody, back in the room then. Everyone's so polite and civil, that's nice. I am appreciating that.
My name's Linda Rowland, I live in Trout Lake, and I am just here really in support of the petition that was submitted to you today. I had to give a little bit of extra thought this morning about driving to Goldendale in an in-person meeting, my first time having done something in person in a long time in a setting such as this. I have attended Zoom meetings before, but I thought this was an important one to attend and voice, my voice to in person. So as I was driving today, I was thinking about something I might say, and I was thinking about the responsibilities and kind of job descriptions of a county commissioner. And I think that popped into my head as I were driving that I thought was so important were that we follow the law. And I took a few minutes to look up where executive order falls under the umbrella of law, because there is a little bit of a distinction between the two. And in fact, it's, it sounds, and from what I did do the reading this morning, that executive order is part of legislative law. It was written under the umbrella, I guess, of what's already established in legislature. So I would expect to be enforced or respect and observe written laws. But maybe the most important thing on my little list as I was driving was respectful behavior. And things I've seen online and the comments I've heard and behaviors I've witnessed, I'm not always seeing, not just amongst the commissioners, but amongst the audience, not seeing the respectful behavior, I appreciated your comments, Mr. Anderson, about how we respect each other. Sometimes I don't see that respect displayed when I attend meetings. And again, it's been online attendance, but when I've dropped from a Zoom meeting and then I see of things that were going on, it certainly didn't feel respectful to me. So I, again, I'm in favor of the petition. And the last thing I'll say before my beeper goes off is, there is a difference between public health and personal health. And when I think of public health, this is a public health issue, and what about public, do some of us not understand? But what I do as a person affects me, but it also affects the greater good. And that's what a democracy is about, doing things for the right reason at the right time for other people as well as ourselves. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Go back online, see if there's anybody, I don't have anyone online. Okay, back in the room, this is Kelsey? Or if you can have your name for the record.
Hi, y'all, Susan Kelsey, Goldendale. And been visiting this issue for a while now. And while I respect the diverseness of our opinions, I wanna say that it really rests with personal liberty. We live in a democratic republic, which upholds, holds individual responsibility and rights and property from the mass. In other words, our constitution says we are endowed with these rights, and one of them is body autonomy. And so, and like I said, while I respect the other, I have to look to the ultimate law of our land, which is the constitution. And I appreciate that our county is upholding our individual autonomy, and I urge you to continue to do that, especially with a virus that has over 99% survival rate. Thank you.
In the room? Sir, go ahead. Can we have your name for the record?
Yes, my name is John Parr.
Can you, can you come up, sir, so folks online can hear you?
Yeah, my name is John Parr. I'm a casual observer of the entire operation here, of the public and also at the county level. I would say the county should open themselves up to more information regarding COVID. Because what I'm looking at here is a top-down diplomacy aimed directly at the county, coming from federal, state levels. And it's a very awkward situation. The narratives they feed everybody are questionable. The statistics they feed everybody are questionable. And I think for that reason, the county should open themselves up to gather some more information regarding the COVID. I would suggest that you give Luke Anderson a chance to present some statistics and feelings from the people that are opposed to the mandates and the vaccinations. This is very important, because there is a large segment of Click Tech County that are opposed to the vax mandates. The mandates themselves are unconstitutional and carry no force of law behind them. They are executive orders. And this goes against a lot of Click Tech County's citizens. This is vitally important that you hear both sides of the coin and gather some more information. I believe Luke is in a good position to present you with a orderly presentation. I would seriously say give him a chance to do this. Well, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. In the room, this will be the last commenter. No, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Sandra Chote. I just wanted to put my two cents in about the mask and the vaccine mandate. Mandating, I feel really strongly that if you work in a, especially in a public venue and your salary is paid by taxpayer money, and you're in a position at either the hospital, the schools, the clinics, public services, social services, in a position where people have to come to your office when they need help, that you should, I have, I absolutely believe that you should, a mask should be mandated and a vaccine should be mandated for all those employees. I just think it's really important. If you go out in the woods and you don't come into town and you don't work, then I don't really care. I think that the, the numbers will take care of that. But if you work in a public space, then I think you need to take care of the public safety. And I, I just feel strongly about that, I don't understand, it's beyond, it bothers my mind that people feel that their rights are being impeded when, when they work, a lot of these people that are protesting masks work around very sick people, you know, the clinic, the hospital, the last time I went to the doctor, and I'm sure this numbers have changed, but the chief of staff, they told me 40% of the P V H employees were unvaccinated, three of them providers. And I just find that that makes it a very scary place to go, especially when you're ill and you need help. And I just feel that mandates are really vital, and we should continue with that.
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson. Alright, so I had one thing left. It was also brought up about the meeting on the 14th and the Zoom shutting off. I apologize to the public who wanted to be there. There is, everything that was said during that town hall can be found online on YouTube, so you can see it all. I would also say I've sent out many emails or votes since. I would also say I've sent out many emails since that time to say, if I, if this group, if you would like me to hold the town hall on the West End to listen to all of you, I would be happy to do that if somebody would like to set up a date. I've said that multiple times. So having that ability to have that same ability, to have that open dialogue over, over, you know, a two-hour period or whatever, I would make myself readily available.
Would that just be with you, Commissioner Anderson?
I'm the one that offered it, so I don't know if my seatmates would or would not.
And would that be, that was all anti-maskers at the last one? Would it be all pro-maskers at that particular meeting?
I, I would, if it was all three of us, we'd have to let everybody in. If you want to just have a discussion with me with just the pro-mask, pro-maccine, we could do that in a setting that would be just for that, especially if you were worried about other people showing up that could be disruptive. So that's why I offered to do it through my emails.
Right, thank you.
And that's, if that's something you would like, I'm more than willing to do that. I believe in equal opportunity to give all sides of the coin.
If there was more than one of us there, we could not restrict it to one group or the other.
You had two of you at the last one.
What's that?
On the 14th. There were two of you at the 14th.
Correct. So anybody could have been in the room for any reason.
No, you took, you cut it off on there. Cut everybody off on Zoom. So that's not true.
Okay, I, I'm gonna stop this citizen comments over. Thank you. First off, for folks and both, and people in the room and online, I appreciate the civil tone. I will say I am still, just on a personal note, dealing with the aftermath of September 14th. That was a, that was a traumatic day for me and not just because it's I believe in the rule of law and that it's my job as the chair to ensure an orderly meeting for folks. People who have been at public hearings with me in the past, even on contentious issues, I pride myself on being able to maintain an atmosphere where people with diverse ideas can feel safe to be able to do that. I was not able to do that on the 14th. And that, I have to say, in my career of 15 years as a county commissioner, that was the first time I was not able to do that. And it was, it was very jarring for me and has, has led to a lot of soul searching, I'll say. So with that, so I appreciate it when we can have these discussions. We can have these discussions on any topic that's really hard in a way that we can respect each other. Because if we don't, if we, if we descend into the way it has been for thousands of years where the people with the biggest six and the loudest voices get to call the shots. And that, that is not how this country was founded. This is, this, it really is an experiment. We keep talking about the experiment of democracy. Because this is very unusual in the history of humanity. And so it was, it was just extremely disappointing to me. So, and so I, I just want to call out and appreciate when we are able to do it in a way that's not like that. So, so thank you all. So, and I'm gonna move us along now. And so I see the quirk is here.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay. It's a public meeting. You want to come up, Renee? You're gonna lead us down the path. And you can come up too if you want. Don't, you're you're supporting Renee. Okay, so this is a discussion regarding who will manage the reporting requirements for the Washington State Administrative Office of the Court's inter-agency reimbursement agreement. What's the acronym for that?
I don't even know. There's so many acronyms floating out there, you know, it's just ridiculous. So a couple of things that I, I had a conversation with Lee, I've had a conversation with goodness, Rod, Rob and Jen, and said that I would, my office would take on the responsibility of that reporting. But I had some other information since I made those comments that I want to share because I think it can be pertinent to maybe a decision that's made. So in several of the counties, the auditor is the one who's going to be doing the reporting. Because the way the Blake contract looks in, you know, some getting the checks to the, the parties is actually gonna be a voucher process, an AP process. That's what I've been hearing a lot. And so they would be the ones to fill out the A-19 for that process. And, and then they would, you know, so then I, I question, okay, so how are they gonna do the case information reporting that's required in this contract? And I don't know how much you guys have studied this contract, but there's a lot of vague language in this contract that leaves a lot of uncertainty as to how we're supposed to do things. And part of it is the reporting of it. The, you know, it says that the report is to include data, including case numbers, aggregate data on the number and the type of cases. I'm not even sure what they mean when they say aggregate data. I mean, I need some clarification. I need something. And then the data that they're looking for is cases that are vacated under Blake. So cases that are strictly only have charges where we have a guilty plea to the drug charges that are no longer valid.
So no resentencing.
Right. And then option, then the second option is resentencing under Blake. So meaning they could have had, you know, an elevated offender score or they may have had a bunch of charges that included the Blake charges which caused their score to be higher. So I understand that. And then they say being worked on under Blake. I have no idea what that means. I've asked people. I asked Dave Canal what that means. He goes, I don't know what that means. So we're to do a report and we have no guidelines for this report. Is there going to be a spreadsheet that goes out so that we're all putting the same information on a spreadsheet? So it just seems like there's some, some clarification that needs to be made regarding this contract so that we can, we all are reporting the same thing using the same form. I, you know, it seems like to me it would be important for the state so that they could merge these Excel spreadsheets that come in. So they have data that makes sense. So that's one of my concerns. So another thought I had about the, the project manager. Do you guys have any questions about that section?
So many, so many of us. No, there's gonna be a comment. So no, continue and we'll wait.
And so, you know, I am concerned about my office, you know, because there's a lot of people to bring, to come together at the table to make these reports work. And, you know, the district courts, I don't, I have no idea what the district courts are doing. There's been no communication to me. I don't know if the prosecutor has gotten any. I don't know what district courts are doing with regards to these charges.
So, do you have a sense, or maybe the legal folk in the room of kind of how that's gonna break out as far as, are the majority, the bulk of the cases are in Superior Court and the district courts would be relatively small or vice versa?
I don't have that.
Because you don't deal with the district.
Yeah, maybe, you know, they can have that.
Any opinion? No, okay. Okay. Because I know there's similar conversations going about with city courts and their, because mo, you know, they don't handle felonies. And so there, there's, there's some discussion going on about how to split the dollars, the pie, because the cities are, I, I think there's, I think there's legislators that are mistake, you know, it's always the, oh, we share, cities and counties share. And it's like, but the cities only have this little teeny piece of it. And so anything that is, is, but that, that's a different conversation, so.
So I'm gonna throw a whole new thought out there for you guys to ponder. Because we have the, the financial committee, I don't know what it's called. And this, this process, I mean, it, it is all, you know, for the reporting, for the most part, is financial based, is to maybe have someone like Jennifer, Jen Neal, possibly be the person who does the reporting. And then make it, for lack of a better term, maybe this Blake thing needs to become a subcommittee of the financial group. Because it's gonna take a lot of coordinating from a lot of departments. You have Jennifer online.
So where would, because the, as you read through the contract, the reports, some of the, I mean, the financial part I get, but the other stuff, the that information is gonna come from different people. Right. And so the person that files the report doesn't necessarily have to be an expert in that subject matter, but they have to know to get the information to, from these three different people, put it all together and send it off to the state who is not gonna likely even look at it. But I, that's a comment, part of the reason that I believe that contract is so vague is they don't know yet. I think you're gonna see, they kind of rushed, you know, they tried to adapt to the, the court case that, that did this. And so the legislature, when they appropriated the $200 million for this, you know, you know, session is a, is a quick thing and they were trying to, I suspect we're gonna see clarification and they're gonna tighten that stuff up in the, but not till the next session. And so we're gonna have to deal with it.
So that's really all I have to offer. And, you know, whatever you guys decide, whoever you want to manage this project, I'm happy with. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a suggestion, maybe we need to reschedule this. That way the auditor can be present as well as the district courts.
Yeah, because it really, that's the whole issue is I think we need to get everybody in the room at the same time.
I agree.
Virtually in the room if not, so that we can fit, because we, none of us really knows how this is gonna work or how to do this.
I don't, and I don't.
And I did, I did hear last Friday that at least in the pre-filing for next year, apparently we're having some success. There is, like, there's been commitments of additional resources to counties anyway, that this 50-50 split between, like, we were gonna, when the money's gone, well, too bad. The legislature is at least hearing that. Might have to do with the Wazoo too, but so that, yeah, I mean, I like that idea as far as I
Maybe the entities themselves that have pieces of this could even get together before they come to you eventually. I do have the contract ready. It's been reviewed, but it sounds like there's a lot of details that need to be worked out.
Yes, I don't know if you want to have them all here for a little workshop session or they should have a little subcommittee.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. What I would, what I would prefer is the people that actually have the, we have none of the information.
We just might have to schedule that for.
But we have the, I mean, we can be the convener, but it should be, you know, the court, the spirit court, district courts, the auditor and the clerk and the prosecutor sit down and, and kind of figure this out as far as who's, or draw straws, who's gonna be the, you know, and Jen, that would be also the finance folks as well.
We're simply issuing the warrants based on the information that's provided to us. So I'm not sure that we necessarily, I mean, it's just like another AP, like with any other grant, you provide us with the information because of warrants. So not sure we need to be part of this other than we're happy to provide the copy.
So that sounds like no. As far as the sub-county's auditors.
You'd have, you'd have to provide us with all the information anyway in order for us to cut the warrant, just like any other grant.
So it sounds like.
Actually, my grants, I don't know that I have a grant that works that way with the auditor's office. Because I, I submit my own spreadsheet and I go straight to the grant folks. It doesn't even come through the bank.
So we. Can we, can, can you come, I, I want to be, I want to be respectful folks on Zoom, of which there is 36 people, so they can hear the conversation. There we go.
So we issue the warrants based on documentation that's provided to us. So if you're doing a reimbursable grant and you cut AP, provided us with whatever information to validate the AP, this would be the same way you'd provide us with the order of the court that says issue this warrant to this person in this amount. And that's what we do. So any of the information that we would have would have come from your office or district court.
So Renee, is this more of an issue of the reporting part is what you're concerned about?
Right.
Not necessarily the cutting.
We still gotta clean up the process, I think, to, to get the checks to people and how that, how that's gonna look. And I, I do know, I wanted to throw this out there too. So the Washington Association of County Officials Conference is going on. I'm doing it virtual. I know the auditors have, Eric, you guys as president, is speaking at their meeting maybe this afternoon. We have a discussion. I can't remember if it's tomorrow or Thursday between prosecutors. And so there's, clerks have another session too. So I mean, and more information is to come. And I think that's part of why we're not able to get anywhere to a consensus is because we keep getting more information. So.
So what is our timeframe on, you, like, I know you have said there's already some folks have filed their, so has the court issued any orders?
Oh, yes, we have orders. We have many orders that are sitting there waiting for a contract to be signed for us to be able to facilitate that order. But until we have a contract and a process in place, I, I am not going to start releasing requests for a release of funds to go back to defendants.
Okay. So I guess what I'm asking is, would this, would this be a more timely discussion after the consenses are over? And like I say, next week, if you could come back with more information.
Could be.
I mean, ultimately, we're gonna have to go.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. What's our schedule look like?
I would have to go look at it. No problem. Jen is online and she definitely would like it rescheduled. She's, she's heard of it.
Okay.
It was just a thought I had in, you know, some discussions.
It was just the same contract that went to every county. For words, and it's not like we're gonna change it or have things do it. We're just gonna sign it.
Yeah.
Until they correct it later.
Right. It's the, more of the, so that we understand how we're administering the contract as it's interpreted.
Yeah, but it, it's the, the reason there's concern is because we don't have any, that it, there's, the direction in this contract for what is supposed to be done by the person doing all the reporting is really unclear.
Has anybody sought guidance from the?
Sought what?
Guidance from the, who, who's, who's the contract with? Is it?
Administrative Office of the Courts, I believe.
So can we send a thing saying, here's our, you know,
Questions on?
Questions on this? What's your guidance on this? How do I report this?
I, that's always possible.
Because they're the ones that are gonna review the, and say, no, this is what we meant.
Yeah, I just don't want to take on a responsibility. And I don't think anybody does, wants to take on a responsibility that you don't have clear instruction in the contract on, on how that looks.
Okay. Okay, let me talk with some of the. Okay, let me talk with some of the counties too.
Yeah, and you know, and maybe Eric will come back with some, some thoughts that you guys can, um. I don't know if you guys have, you know, weekly.
I have on Friday.
Yeah, so, I mean, it may be a good time here to talk to him too, maybe.
Okay, and we'll be, we'll see about scheduling more.
Okay.
Once we know what.
Yeah, sounds great.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Court. Yes. These, um, sometimes are scheduled, you can have them in a different time, which this is scheduled to.
So these are usually always scheduled to fifteen.
Well, it's, you can use those two minutes, uh, okay, well, we actually, uh, I would, we can look at the consent if anybody all. Wapping three items.
Um, so we have the consent with three items, then we have the public works change order.
Oh, we have that.
So wouldn't that make it four items? All right, Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, the consent agenda with three items. Okay, I have a motion, a second on the consent agenda, all three items, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. Three change orders on the wall. Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve change order number two, the Roosevelt Grade Overlay, CRP three six two, federal aid number. STBR dash N two zero one, zero 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 one, contract number TA dash seven zero seven nine, and the amount of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This change order provides for the additional depth of point one seven feet of, uh, CL three quarter inch. H M A P G two eighty six four on five miles of the Roosevelt Grade Road, also known as about two inches. I have a motion and a second on change order number two, this is to add. Apparently two inches of asphalt on the Roosevelt Grade project, on the five miles of Roosevelt Grade, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, we have, I can, I can give you four minutes. Okay.
You still have AP two.
Oh, we do, pay the bills first, and then you.
Mister Chairman, make a motion to repay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of a hundred forty four thousand, six hundred, sorry, a hundred forty four thousand, three hundred sixty nine dollars and twenty one cents. And the payroll benefit warrants, the amount of zero dollars for the date ending October fourth, twenty twenty one.
Second, motion a second to pay the bills, any discussion on those? There being none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passed. No, you, actually, you still got, we actually have five minutes, cuz we can't start before the. So we're gonna recess for five minutes, we'll be back in two fifteen. Well, by, what is that constructive, something, if you, two of you leave, it's, it's over. You don't even need a motion.
I don't expect that the applicant would be.
Okay. Okay, I will, um. We'll reopen our, our commissioner meeting. Um, I will declare a public hearing open for the, the purpose of this hearing is to consider an application for classification. Of parcel numbers zero four dash one six dash nineteen hundred dash zero 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 two slash zero zero, and parcel zero four. Dash one six, the, two zero three two dash zero 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 four zero zero. To the open space farm and agriculture conservation land, current use assessment. Under chapter eighty four point three four of the RCW, consisting of approximately three hundred eighty five point seven seven acres. The applicant is Floyd Bartonus. I will now ask, uh, folks if they have any ex parte contacts. Or potential conflicts of interest, which board members, uh, need to disclose.
I don't, but.
I have none.
Approximately, seems pretty specific.
I know, I'm reading from the report. We'll see, cuz the county, the county. Oh, well. That's why I said approximately, so. Uh, okay, I have none, no ex parte context. Okay, we will start with a brief staff review, are you gonna provide, um, assessor staff. Provides a brief overview of the current use program applied for, it generally offers nerve patients. If you can come forward, Mister Bellamy, tell folks online.
Thank you, Mike Bellamy with Clicktack County Assessor's Office, I have, uh, just a few packets, if I can pass these around. I don't know. What would need them?
Most of the same comments that you had supplied to me earlier.
Um, this is the memo, it, it starts with the memorandum from our office. Um, that I had, that I had supplied to you earlier, it's probably part of the package.
Yes, it is.
Already, I, I would imagine, I thought I'd bring it down, just cuz this essentially sums up. Um, the position of the assessor's office, um, that we recommend the approval of this application. That, uh, be, because Mister Bartonus is disabled, and is, and is not only incapable. Of, uh, operating a commercial agricultural venture. He has really struggled in the last several years to be able to get somebody. To lease the property as well, it, it is. Um, almost four hundred acres of prime grazing land that has been used in the past, could be used in the future. And removing it from this program, um. Is going to not only put a tax burden on him for having to pay those taxes back, the additional tax interest penalty that comes up. Whenever properties removed out of one of these programs, but then in the future, moving forward to be able to, to pay his annual property taxes. He, I don't know what he would do with that, but, um, if that would definitely provide incentive to parcel up the land and sell it off. Instead of maintaining it as a large, open piece of ground that could be used in the future. To graze cattle, just as it has been in the past. I printed out his parcel, um, the, uh, the home site parcel is receiving a, uh, senior disabled exemption currently. While I can't divulge all the details from his file on that, because it's prohibited under RCW forty two fifty six two thirty. Uh, section four B, that what I can tell you is that he is, uh. And has provided proof of his disability to our office to receive, uh, this exemption.
And the, the home parcel is not this parcel?
Um, the home parcel is one of these, uh, his exemption is on the actual home where he lives, and up to five acres. Of parcel oh four one six one nine zero 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 two zero zero.
That's the home person.
Yeah, and again, it's only an exemption on the buildings for the, with his home, the house where he lives. And, and five acres of the ground. Um, I did provide a copy of Washington Administrative Code four fifty eight dash thirty, dash two forty two, where it's highlighted. Um, the specific requirement, uh, under, uh, section three A. Previously classified as farm and agricultural land, under RCW eighty four thirty four twenty. Section two, that no longer meets the criteria for classification under that section. You may want to, uh, read through a couple of the examples that are given, um, in this administrative code. One of which is for a piece of property, um, that had not been enrolled before in the farm and ag program. Um, but had been farmed, and, uh, the owner. In this scenario becomes disabled and is no longer able to farm his property. That would be eligible for the farm and ag conservation program. The other example being a widow who is not able to, who has been in the program, in the farm and ag program. Who is not going to be able to continue the commercial agricultural venture on her own. A, as another example, obviously several different examples could come up. But I think that Mister Bartonus's case is pretty close to the. An example of, of what these two examples indicates. He's disabled and unable to manage his, uh, a farm and agricultural venture. He's, uh, not able to consistently keep a lease agreement going. Uh, again, because of, of the extent of his disabilities. And it's land that has been previously, uh, in the farm and ag program, that no longer meets the criteria because of that. Uh, but that could at a future date easily go back into agricultural production. And, and qualify again for just the regular farm and ag program.
How does it go in the future to do that, if he decides or wife or son or whoever down the road. Says, hey, I've locked in this lease for ten years, they just have to even get it back in the original program.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just simply a matter of, uh, reapplying. Again, just as he had to apply to transfer from the regular farm and ag program into the conservation. They, at that point, would apply to transfer from the conservation back into the regular farm and ag.
The next question I have.
I'm actually gonna hold that, cuz I, I do have to follow, this is a formal, I have to follow the procedural process, so. This is, you will. Up to public testimony, then he can ask questions.
Oh, sure, uh, that.
I don't, I'm not anticipating a lot of, but.
That essentially concludes, uh, the, the state, my statement and the position of the assessor's office. The, uh, the other one, the other page I have on here is just again, from RCW eighty four thirty four twenty. That defines farm and agricultural conservation.
Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony. Uh, there's an opportunity for the applicant to provide testimony, I don't believe the applicant is online. But I will give an opportunity if. Runner and assumed name. Which we're seeing sometimes. I would, uh, also, I, uh, without that, I would also open it up for anyone that is opposed. Um, to this application, this is your opportunity. Raise your hand.
Hello, hello there.
Yes. Can we have?
Yeah, hello.
Can we have your name?
My name is Ken McKeown. By, in Golandale here.
Go ahead.
I, I'm a friend of, of Mister Bartonus, I know his situation very well. He's just a good old country gentleman farmer that's disabled. And, uh, he, he deserves any consideration that the county can give him. To hang on to his family's farm there. Uh, you don't wanna tax him off of it, you don't wanna run him off of it with wind, or solar panels or windmills. I know I'm good enough to know that, that ain't, that's not gonna happen on, he's, he's not. He could make a million dollars off of that place if he wanted to, money isn't the most important thing to him. He, he loves the land, it was handed down to him from his grandfather, Tom Miller. Uh, it's, it's got, uh, water rights, he could irrigate if he wanted to. Uh, anything you can do to help him stay on his home, would, would, I, I personally would appreciate it, and I sure know he would too.
Thank you, Mister McKeown.
Thank you.
Any other folks wishing to provide public testimony, both for or against the applicant? Right, not seeing anybody, okay. Uh, now is an opportunity, if you have questions.
So, under the conservation, is there limits on use? Do they, you don't have to stand for me. Is there, I mean. Kitty graze cattle in there if he wanted to next year, and just not get the tax credit for doing it the other way? Um, or do that, does it have to be off limits, hands off, can't touch this, don't drive a quad on it, or have habitat for gray squirrels, type of a scenario?
Right, um, uh, you, the answer is, is yes, uh, if there was a time where he could. Uh, actually get a lease agreement going, that's permissible under the farm and ag conservation program. It's just that he's no longer required to.
So there's no hands off, leave this to nature, kind of a.
No, and it, and it doesn't affect the zoning of it as well, um, it, it's very definitely specifically. For the conservation of farm and agricultural properties, um, that have been used traditionally, that are, that don't qualify. For just the farm and ag program currently, but that could at a future time.
So we're not necessarily saving butter, butterflies, we're saving land, so a future generation might be able to grow weed.
That's correct.
So, that's, that was my clarification.
Yeah, and, and again.
Conservation is to conserve it for farming.
For farming use, absolutely.
Sometimes we use the word conservation to mean other things than what I think they should be. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and it would be a simple matter of just, uh, reapplying for the, the regular farm program to just transfer again, just as he's transferring now.
And you'd have to stand here and ask, and then we would have to.
That one actually goes back in the hands of the assessor's office, administratively, um, yeah, yeah, it's, it's anything that's under, uh. Uh, section one of the Open Space Taxation Act comes before, uh, the local board. Um, the, uh, the farm and ag program itself under section two is handled administratively by the assessor's office.
Which renders. Okay, so first question is, when it goes into this program, um, is it the same taxes, tax rate? Um, per acre as, as just the regular farm and open space?
No, no, it won't be, again, because, uh, the, the taxable value under, uh. The farm and ag program that, that we normally use is based specifically on use, and so, for instance. Uh, just raw grazing land, um, which is, is on the lower end.
Right.
That, as the value per acre that's taxable, orchards, vineyards, uh, things like that are, are on the high end. Of, because it's, it's based upon the production capacity, as far as assessing it within the program. With, uh, with the open space farm and agricultural conservation program, it's valued in the same way that any other parcel that is under. Uh, open space, section one, would be valued, which is half of its market value.
Missioners, those numbers are in your packet that breaks it down to what the taxes were paid in twenty twenty, which was in the farm and ag program. And then it also gives you an estimate what it would be under conservation land. That also gives you an idea of what the payout would be if it was removed.
Yeah, I was just looking for the page number, so I can recite it to that.
Typically, depending on what the current use. Was. Yet, like in this case, it's actually, the taxes will go up somewhat.
They, they will.
Still much more affordable than if it was removed from the program.
Yes, it absolutely is, it's, uh, if, you know, the first thing he's going to save is he's not going to have to pay back the additional tax. For the past seven years with interest and twenty percent penalty, and that's a huge savings right there. Um, but then secondly, annually, it's not going to be, uh, the taxes won't be based on the full market value, it'll be based on fifty percent. Of the market value, um, which while it is an increase from, uh, from the, uh. Value per acre on grazing land, it's still not going to have that, that bigger burden on him, um, of just regular market value.
And that opens up another question, he says, based on fifty percent, what's regular grazing land under the ag program?
It's, I say, it's like seventeen dollars an acre. Of taxable value, cur- currently, and again, it's, it varies because, uh, it, it's based on the, uh, production value. And it's, it's based on information that we gather from local, uh, ranchers on their lease agreements. And.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where you came up with that number.
Yeah, and there's a, I didn't bring the RCW that, that has it, but there's a, a capitalite. Uh, capitalization rate, I believe is the term for it, that then is applied to it as well, I'm not as familiar. It, it with the nuts and bolts of that part portion, because it's a, it's an appraisal function. Uh, I'm more of a compliance and, uh, legal part.
Is my role. Saying though, is if it would be who of him to have a lease because then his actual taxation would go down.
Yes, yes, if if he was able to keep a lease going, but again. He has really struggled these past years to do that, and I would expect for the the remainder of his life that he. Uh, given the extent of his disabilities and his current struggles, will can, would continue to have that same sort of scenario. Uh, it mo- it most likely would remain just as conservation land for the rest of Mr. Bartonus's life. And then again, by it, uh, when taken over by an heir or even a a rancher that. That the property ends up getting sold to years down the road.
And further clarification, in twenty twenty, I believe it was, he was removed from the program because he did not respond to the questionnaires. And so he had to appeal to the Board of Actualization.
Within the right timeframe.
It was the. Because he did finally provide some leases and he had neighbors that were helping.
Yes, and and just as, uh, just as Mr. McCune had had come to vouch for, he, uh, he had another neighbor come in to help him. He was, he's not able himself to, uh, to be able to under- read and understand the the paperwork that comes to him. Uh, and to be able to to deal with that properly, let alone manage. An agricultural venture or a lease agreement.
I'm asking a lot of questions just for my own personal knowledge, not that this gentleman is a good person and and well deserving of this program, so. It's just me asking questions. I have no further question.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, wait a minute, let me close. If there's no more, I I don't have any questions. I will now close the public hearing to further public comment. Or actually, before I do that, I am actually supposed to ask one more time. Is there anybody online that wishes to provide public comment? Both for or against this application, a general public comment. This is your opportunity, not seeing anybody. So then, with that, I will now close it for the public comment, discussion by the board. Is optional, though I think I would say just a comment, to me, this. Um, this application is exactly what this RCW is for. It is that we do, it's, you know, we want. There's a reason I believe that we have. You know, our tax system in Washington, we, there's a public value to to, you know, open spaces farm, you know, in that. That's why there's a tax break for that kind of stuff because we appreciate that. And we want to preserve that land to be able to be used in the future and, you know, if the, if the, if the owner is disabled and can't do it. We don't want to lose that land because once it's out of ag production is likely, because we know what will happen to it. It will be subdivided and sold and it's not, it's not gonna go back. And so we can kind of take a pause on getting future, although in this case, we're not, we're actually gaining. We're actually getting a little more revenue out of it with it out of production as far as it taxes. Uh, and it does incentivize to get it back into production and then. Someday it'll go back into production and we'll go on our way. So I I definitely support this application. And with that, if there's any more other comments, this is the opportunity, or I would entertain a motion.
I was, I was just gonna ask, um, it was since it was brought up by Mr. McCune and this is an area up there. Um, in terms of like an heir wanted to put solar panels on it, they would have to then. Pull it out from the program and put it into whatever program that 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 is, it'll change the zoning, it doesn't change all that.
That's, that's correct, sir. Uh, they would have to, upon putting in solar panels on that property, it would have to come out of the old space farm that conservation.
And he'd still be paying.
So, yes, the additional taxes with interest and penalty would be applicable then.
Currently paying, not based on what he was.
Correct.
Because it's a half, whatever, fifty percent. Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the application for classification, uh, reclassification. Of a property is open space farm and agricultural conservation land. Or. Application numbers of OS dash FCL dash two zero two one dash zero one applicant. Bartonus parcels number zero four sixteen nineteen zero 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 two zero zero zero. And four zero four one six two zero three two zero 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 four zero zero. For a total of three hundred and eighty five point seven three, seven seven three eight.
Here comes the clerk. There's some certain things need to continue.
Your motion there. It's in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, I would love to, uh.
Admit your motion.
Admit my motion to approve the application for classification to open space farm and agricultural. Conservation land current use assessment application number zero or OS dash FCL dash two zero two one dash zero one. Applicant Floyd Bartonus and direct staff to prepare the findings of fact and conclusions consistent with the board discussion for consideration. On October twelfth, twenty twenty one.
I will happily second, wish this gentleman good health.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the application for classification to open space farm and. Ag conservation land current use assessment along. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I will also, I will inform, please inform the applicant. Uh, they will be advised in writing of the board's decision. Uh, if, which the applicant has received a favorable decision in full or in part, they will be sent an open space taxation agreement. Which may contain conditions as imposed by the granting authority. It will be necessary to sign and return the agreement within the stated timeline. So with that, this, um, I will now close the hearing, so. Thank you, sir. Next up is prosecuting attorney David Canal, pending issues, some of which may qualify or may not. Sure, you don't have anything at this time. You're not going anywhere? Okay, that's what I thought.
Well, do we want to figure?
Yeah, what, what did you need before we both take your turn? What's that?
I'm waiting for HR's time.
Okay.
Maybe back on there.
Okay.
Well.
It's kind of the.
Is yours open?
Did yours open? Can we do yours first?
Well, part of HR's.
I know part of HR's gonna be open and part of it's not, but we could do, maybe if HR's available, they could do their open session and we could do. Apples are all over the place. It's okay. I'm getting good at dodging apples, so. Oh, that's why I had for lunch, so. You caught the apple.
I did.
Okay, he likes to go last.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, open session, HR stuff first. That's what she told you anyway. You go on over there, I'll.
The hill and turn around, there's nobody behind you.
Oh, okay. Hi.
Catch your breath.
Why is the chair down so low? Um, no, I just would request verbal to advertise for a communication officer position. There's already a position that they are currently advertising for and they would like to change it to two vacancies. Because they received a retirement notification. At the end of the year, so there is an opportunity that it might be double filled. It would be less than a month though, and so. Because it's taking longer to fill those positions, we are just requesting to get the verbal to post that.
Volume discount maybe.
Add to our supplemental budget request. Definitely in the amber, ten thousand dollars for two months.
You're assuming you're.
And get him into training, that's the thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, have him trained at least two months before that retiree leaves.
If you get two solid folks and they're gung ho and they're both want us, I think we'll deal with the other piece of it.
Always a stop while you're here.
Way to think positive. Okay, open, close. This would be a quote you want to do.
Negotiation before him and executive, which executive we doing first? He probably doesn't want me in his. Should we go first?
Okay, so that would be a closed session for union negotiations, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Or how long are you anticipating?
Uh, fifteen minutes, probably a half hour, but fifteen minutes for sure.
And we want to let everybody online know and shut this thing down.
Yes.
Yeah, because we won't, we won't come back. I mean, we'll come back, but we're not gonna take any action on anything. Yeah, so we are going to, our only other items on our executive session, we do not. So we're gonna kick everybody off. We, we're not anticipating coming back and taking any actions or having any open session. Um, discussion, so.
When I make you play in the executive session, under what?
Under, yes, I will make the announcement.
And then if it's too simple.
Right. So we will go into executive session in accordance with RCW forty two point three zero point one four zero print four. Uh, this is a closed session to discuss collective bargaining proposals, negotiations, grievances. Mediation and or arbitration proceedings all associated with collective bargaining. And then we will have another executive session in accordance with RCW forty two point three zero point one one zero. Print one, print I, this is for pending litigation that will be with the prosecuting attorney. Yeah, I will. So when we adjourn, we will adjourn, uh, when we adjourn, we will adjourn our regular meeting until nine AM. On Thursday, October seventh, we have scheduled workshops. Uh, we also are attending the board of. Where the commissioners will be attending the Clicktack County Public Economic Development Authority meeting tonight. Beginning at six PM, that meeting will be held on Zoom. Uh, the links are on the county website. That is open to the public if you want. That's the Economic Development Authority. So with that, we're gonna go to executive, the first executive session.